The Eau Claire City Council Meeting will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to recall that for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Benjamin. Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emanuel.
Here.
Gregard.
Here.
Clinkhammer.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman. Good evening, and thank you all for joining us here this afternoon, both in person and those of you either online or watching on TV. We appreciate your engagement and the time and commitment that you make to be a part of this. I want to welcome everyone to our Monday, July 22 meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday meeting, the Eau Claire City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where questions -- where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on the important decisions we will be making at our legislative session either tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. here in these chambers or in a future meeting over the next month or so. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To those of you not able to join us in person to watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also simulcast at 101.9 FM, and you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Chippewa Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item, and following that presentation, the council may have questions to clarify the issue. We will then open the item up for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please come forward one at a time. When you approach, please begin by announcing your name and your address, and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes. You will see three lights on the podium there. The green light will start once you start speaking. When you see the yellow light turn on, you'll know that you have one minute left to start wrapping up, and then when it turns red, I will politely ask you to please finish your comments so that others can speak. Sometimes council members will also have follow-up questions for you if you come up to the podium, so please give them a moment to see if there are any questions before you step away. If you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. If you haven't done so yet, there's a sign-up sheet for the comment period on the table at the back of the room. So those of you that wish to speak to an agenda item that's on our agenda tonight, then that would need to be done during that period, either the public discussion or the public hearing. If you wish to speak to something that isn't on the agenda tonight, either a hearing or a discussion, then you would want to sign up for the public commentary period, which is at the very end of the meeting. And any of that conversation or any of those comments or items that you wish to speak about cannot be on the agenda tonight. There would have to be something -- there would have to be something else that we'll go through the criteria for that later, but just want to make sure. I know there were some questions in regards to who should be signing up and who shouldn't. Only if you wish to speak at the end of the meeting about an item that is not on the agenda will you want to sign up on that sheet. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking at the podium, you can fill out a comment form also on the table at the back of the room, and those comments are then distributed to council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call council members outside of this meeting, and our contact information can be found on the city website and as well on a sheet on the back table at the back of the room. With that introduction, we'll get on to our first order of business. There's one item scheduled for a public hearing on tonight's agenda. There's a public hearing on a resolution vacating the alley west of Oxford Avenue from Cameron Street to Maxon Street, and then discontinuing the northern one half of Cameron Street from Mappa Street to Oxford Avenue. Mr. Solberg.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is regarding two streets in the cannery area of the city of Eau Claire on the west side of the Chippewa River and north of Madison Street. The city is -- has initiated a request to vacate the above referenced right-of-ways. This is Cameron Street from Oxford Avenue to Mappa Street, the north half of that right-of-way, and then also the alley from Cameron Street to Maxon Street in this location. There is no public utilities in Cameron Street, and there is some public utilities currently existing in the alley between Cameron and Maxon Street. Those will be removed upon commencement of a proposed development of the Cannery Trail residences on this site. Electrical utilities also exist in the alley. The developer will need to work with Excel Energy to remove those electrical utilities to combine the parcels and facilitate their development. The city has no need for public utilities in either of these right-of-way going forward, so a companion resolution will be brought forward tomorrow that will release our utility easements in these locations as well. We have a view of the Cameron Street right-of-way as it exists. So in the south half of the Cameron Street right-of-way, there are very extensive electrical utilities for Excel Energy. The northerly half that is proposed to be vacated is in this location as shown. With that, I will take any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Solberg? Councilmember Gregard.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. I guess if you could keep that photo up there, and I realize there's a major incline there between Oxford Avenue and Mappa Street, and I guess I was wondering if you could explain what you envisioned for potential pedestrian connections between the Cannery District and Oxford Avenue area and the Mappa Street and Bellinger Street area. Considering that this would probably redo some of our options, do you think that there's any way to potentially include a bicycle path, or is it really just a pedestrian stairs that we could build there?
We did look at that after a question was raised earlier regarding that, and this is of the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan. I don't know if you can zoom in any further on it. It shows the right-of-way for Cameron Street in this location as a neighborhood route for bicycles. So it basically comes up Cameron Street, and then it goes south to cross Madison Street, and then continue on First Avenue. And there also is a north-south crossing on Bellinger Street. So this is a larger-scale view of what the bike plan shows. Sorry if you can -- I'm out with the solid red lines are with the bicycle plan. The adopted bicycle plan show for neighborhood bicycle routes, the north-south here. This stretch is steep, as shown in the pictures, and you can see that the contours are very sharp right here, but as you go up Madison Street and as you go up Maxon Street, the contours are quite a bit more gradual. The street has been graded to be a little bit easier for vehicles as well as pedestrians. So if this right-of-way were vacated, we wouldn't obviously have a street here in the future, nor were we planning one, so we would look at having probably stairs with a runnel at this location on our side of the right-of-way that's left. It wouldn't be possible to have an ADA-accessible route unless you brought a trail all the way out to Oxford, but what we would recommend is using Bellinger Street then as a route and with the dashed red lines here. You can come to the corner where you have the brewing project, the children's theater, and the new Cannery Trail apartments. So this corner will have quite a few draws for bicycle usage, and utilize Maxon Street to come to this location, or come down Mappa Street, which does not have any driveways. It comes down Mappa Street currently. It's one that we've looked at in the future with the cannery as, you know, is this an opportunity for more pedestrian-centric going into the district from Madison Street? Use it in a reverse direction to come down and then use a sidewalk or a widened sidewalk in front of QuickTrip to get to the same location that the original bike plan shows getting to here than going to the south. So I think having pedestrian accommodations here with the stairs and a runnel, if that's what the overall pedestrian plan entails for the cannery, still offers good opportunity to go south and to go north with bicycle access to Oxford Avenue on there. So I think we're in good shape for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Solberg? I don't see any. Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Again, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to three items that are on the agenda for public discussion. Agenda item number one, a public discussion on approving the naming -- naming the Forest Street Special Area to Veterans Tribute Park, which is postponed from the July 9, 2019 council meeting. Request has been withdrawn for this item by the applicant. Council have any questions for Mr. Pipinger? I don't see any. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
I have a question too. I don't know if I've just come up here. My question --
Actually, I'll have you come up and just introduce yourself with your name and your address, and then again, the only thing that we can speak about in this item is just the naming of the item.
Yes. My name is Kelly Ware. I live at 815 Chapin Street, Eau Claire, and I wish, now that the Veterans Trail is possibly moving, I mean, there's controversy about, is it called Green Space? Is it called Forest Street? I'm trying to get clarification, and I have an idea for the name of the park.
Sure, and I guess we'll probably take that up in the future when we start --
Okay.
If that's okay, and if you have any other further questions afterwards, we'd be happy to follow up with you or Mr. Solberg or Mr. Pipinger.
So can you just clarify what that part -- what that area is named? Is it Green Space or Forest Street Park? And I don't know. I've heard conflicting stories.
Yeah, right now it's called the Forest Street Special Area.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close that item and move on to agenda item number two, a public discussion for the proposed 2020 to 2024 capital improvement plan for the city of Eau Claire. Mr. Winsans.
Oh, I'm sorry.
City Manager Peters.
Thank you, Council President Weld. If I could, just before Mr. Winsans puts a presentation on the CIP, I wanted to make a couple of comments. Over the last few months, the council's been reviewing, you know, the five-year capital improvement plan, and that, of course, is a planning document, and it's the plan that guides our investments in capital projects like streets and bridges and parks and buildings, and it's how we take care of what we have, and it's where new projects come forward, and hopefully it represents the priorities and the values of the council. The last few years, we've seen an increase in investment in renewable energy, participatory budgeting, and affordable housing. About $4.7 million for those combined priorities have been added to the CIP in the last two years. Addressing the challenge of affordable housing has become a much stronger priority for the community, council, and for the staff. Participation in the Affordable Housing Task Force resulted in no less than 29 items of related activity and work related to affordable housing. And as we've looked a lot at affordable housing, it's a really broad topic, and it ranges from housing people with little or no means to housing people with wage -- with low-wage workers to housing middle-income or even higher-income housing opportunities. It's a broad spectrum, and it's going to require a multiple -- multi-pronged approach. One point in this broad spectrum is affordable home ownership at that lower-end wage scale, housing that allows for renting families the opportunity to step up and have ownership, which is an important step in achieving housing security and personal wealth growth. The initial recommended CIP from the city manager contained funding for affordable housing in 2020 for about $250,000, and the rationale there was that we needed some time for planning for specific projects to be developed, and if those projects could be developed, we could perhaps bring it forward in next year's CIP or pull it forward. Recently, an opportunity and some analysis became available to address one aspect of affordable housing. The revised CIP, which is before you tonight, includes moving the 200,000 of the 250,000 from 2020 to 2000 -- or 2022 to 2020 for the purchase and planning related to the development of up to 50 small lots, smaller affordable homes. It's an opportunity to replace an alternative, what would have likely been a very large lot, with likely upper-income one-home building site. The proposal certainly promotes infill development, and it allows families who may have been renting to step up and have ownership, which allows them, of course, to build equity and wealth. It then makes available other rental opportunities. So what this does is directly address one aspect of that housing, affordable housing spectrum, and it indirectly will add supply to the housing rental market. The concept summary is that the city would purchase the land, plat the land, install the roads and the infrastructure, and then sell the lots with restrictions on the affordability and the resale. The CIP that's before you tonight will appropriate the funds for the purchase of the land and the planning of this project, which might include also doing a possible health impact assessment. The project will be follow all of the normal planning processes and appeal processes, which include the normal and usual council approvals. So this starts that conceptual process. I don't know that I have many other details to add at this time, but I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have before we turn this over to Jay for the full presentation of the rest of the CIP.
Does council have any questions for City Manager Peters? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, City Council President Weld. Want to thank Dale for your presentation and the work on this as well. Just a follow-up question regarding the offset for this item. Could you speak a little more to that side of it?
There really isn't an offset because we would be moving the money from the 2022 line item to the 2020. So, you know, the total CIP stays the same. In addition, there will be, I mean, if you drill down into some more of the details, as part of the operating budget, I'm going to be proposing that we set up a housing and development fund, similar to our economic development fund. These funds would go over there. That's how they'd be used. It would be my hope that some of the proceeds for the sale of these lots would actually go back to reimburse the CIP for this. So it's neutral in the sense that it moves it forward two years, so the total amount stays the same, but there may also be an offsetting revenue source when we sell the lots, but I didn't want to get ahead of ourselves with that at this time.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Manager Peters, just for your work on this, and I understand that this wasn't, even though this came together perhaps publicly in the last 10 days, that staff has been working on this proposal for many months, and council also just learned about this as well. So thank you for just helping with that foresight. Could you talk a little bit about the concept of holistically looking at affordable housing? I know that you sent an email to council to help us understand a little bit more today, and I think that's important for the public because although we'll be looking at one initiative, that there's really a broader context, and I'm wondering if you can help round out that public part of that conversation of what does that mean and what do you think that looks like?
Well, as I mentioned in my earlier remarks, it is a -- there's a broad spectrum of challenges related to affordable housing, and this is one point on that spectrum, home ownership for the lower-wage earners. We understand from a staff perspective, and particularly the staff that's working with the Affordable Housing Task Force, that this is not the only point on that spectrum. And so, you know, making housing available and affordable at all levels is important, and certainly addressing the, you know, the needs of people who have very low means. The other component that you might be asking about is that when you look at, you know, a lot of the statistics, you know, the rent in Eau Claire is actually very average to the rents, you know, around the state, and what makes, you know, housing, you know, less affordable in Eau Claire is that actually our incomes are lower than the rest of the state. And so it's not perhaps sometimes so much an issue of the price of the rents as it is the affordability or the incomes that people have to be able to afford those rents.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. I was just wondering, and maybe it's too early to ask, well, we don't have the answer, I guess, never too early to ask, but do you see an option in the future being someone buying one of these smaller homes and then turn around and renting it, or would that be one of the deed restrictions, or perhaps that would give another way for affordable rentals of a small home?
Sure. At this point, we're thinking in terms of the equity and the home ownership that, you know, a family can gain with that. That level of detail, though, has yet to be developed and certainly will be brought forward for review and approval by the council as we go down this path.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you, City Manager Peters. Mr. Winsans.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Weld. If I could just add just one more thing to the city manager's response to Councilmember Emanuel's excellent question, and that is that, you know, just wanted to point out that there are also two multifamily rental projects currently underway that we anticipate will be applying for low-income housing tax credits this December. The Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Agency takes applications once per year, and that is in December, and we expect that Cannery Trail residences, as well as the developer that we're working with on the Transit Transfer Center, will be applying for low-income housing tax credits this fall. So there are, you know, when the city manager mentioned a multi-pronged approach, that's exactly what's going on right now, and there are several initiatives in the pipeline. Shifting gears to the proposed CIP. I do have my glasses on. There we go. So the capital improvements plan, or capital improvement plan, CIP, included within this document are funds that we use to maintain or improve fixed assets such as buildings, vehicles, equipment, land. It's considered a capital expenditure when the asset is newly purchased or when the money is being used towards extending the useful life of that asset by at least one year, such as repairing the roof on a building or the renovations we're doing to City Hall. This is distinguished from operating expenses, and we'll be preparing and reviewing the operating budget later this summer. The cost for capital items, or items to be included in the capital budget are, it must exceed $5,000, and the costs are usually one-time in nature. That is, you purchase an item or you repair a building, and then you're done with that particular expenditure for some period of time. The process that we've gone through this year in preparing the CIP, we kicked this -- the planning process off back in March with kickoff meeting with division and department heads. The city council had a work session on May 28 to talk about priorities and parameters for the CIP. In June, we had three work sessions related to the CIP, and June 19, the Transit Commission reviewed the CIP. June 26, Parks and Waterways reviewed the CIP, and on July 15, the Plan Commission reviewed the CIP. Just quickly running through some of the highlights in the CIP within the water fund, there are modifications to our water basins for $5 million being proposed. This will increase the capacity of the water treatment facility to provide clean water to the community, and will also significantly save on water usage at the treatment facility. Right now, without the basin modifications, we're having to backwash our filters quite frequently. This will extend the number of days between washing the filters, thus decreasing water consumption at the water treatment facility. In addition, within the water fund includes $3.67 million for an additional crossing of the Chippewa River. At the present time, there's only a single crossing of the Chippewa River on the north side of Eau Claire, and if something were to happen with that crossing, it would significantly decrease the reliability of the water supply to that, those portions of our community. In addition, within this CIP, there is a solar electric project at the water treatment facility. This would include the generation of electricity at that facility and would be working towards our renewable energy goals that the city council has adopted. Jumping over to the stormwater fund, a pretty significant project included within this fund is the reconstruction of the levee running parallel to the Chippewa River along the Forest Street. There we go. Thank you. It just jumped out of my head. The Forest Street Special Area. So this levee is really of sort of unknown construction. We believe it was constructed by the Corps of Engineers a number of years ago, and it's time for that to be reconstructed to current standards to make sure that it continues to hold back the Chippewa during times of high water. Within the parking fund, there is $3 million included for design and engineering related to downtown structured parking. As many of you know, the Gibson Street parking ramp is reaching the end of its useful life. There is a parking study currently underway to take a look at downtown parking needs and how those needs can be accommodated if the Gibson Street ramp is no longer there, what areas within the community can that parking be provided, and then this would allow us to have funds to start the design and engineering process for replacement parking structures. Within public transit, we've got $122,000 provided for bus stop shelters. Unlike prior years where that project was dependent upon the receipt of federal funds, these shelters are being funded entirely by the general fund, so they will be constructed and put into service. There's $1.8 million for replacement of buses within our fleet, and $310,000 for a tablet fare and data system that will allow us to better meet the needs of our customers in collecting fares, and will also give us better data about who is riding our buses. Within the Fairfax Municipal Pool, there's $100,000 for a water play feature in the CIP. There's a renovation of the concession stand. As some council members may recall, this was originally planned for this current year, but there was not sufficient funding for the completion of that project. And lastly, the water slide is starting to reach the end of its useful life, and there's $400,000 included for the replacement of that feature. Within land building and equipment, it doesn't sound real exciting, but there's nearly $2.7 million included in the CIP for our management information systems. This is the network that the city runs on. All the servers, all the switches, all the infrastructure that's used to connect the different computers together and our web servers, all needs to be constantly maintained and upgraded as it reaches the end of its useful life. So over the five years of the CIP, there's $2.7 million being provided to make sure that continues to -- and upgraded as it reaches the end of its useful life. So over the five years of the CIP, there's $2.7 million being provided to make sure that continues to meet our needs. Within land building and equipment, there's also investments in renewable energy, totally $1.9 million over the five years of the CIP. This is a significant increase from the amount being provided in the CIP during the last budget cycle. There's $500,000 provided for a new initiative called participatory budgeting. This process is just being, will be kicked off very shortly. Consultant has been retained, and I know that the kickoff meeting has been scheduled for the participatory budgeting process to start laying out how that's going to work and what the process is going to be. This will then allow, provide funding for, for those projects in 2020 as well as through 2025. As the city manager indicated previously, there's $1.25 million included in this CIP for investments in affordable housing. And as he indicated, $200,000 of that will be moved forward from the original proposal of 2022 to 2020 for the housing project he described. And last, included within land building and equipment are body worn cameras. The police department is moving forward with this initiative. The technology has gotten to a point where I believe the police department is comfortable that it is, that is kind of tried and true, and they will, they're planning to move forward with the use of those cameras. We've had in-squad cameras for quite some time, but this would be the body worn cameras. Within the transportation fund, over the five years of the CIP, we've got about $2.5 million for the citywide trail program, about $7 million for railroad safety improvements. And this includes, I believe, about $5 million for the Galloway and the Galloway Street, street crossing, the grade separation of that particular crossing. Jeffers Road is scheduled to be reconstructed at a price tag of about $1.15 million. Fairfax Street is also scheduled to be constructed at about $1.57 million. And last, the Dewey, the Dewey Street Bridge is scheduled to be redected, and that will be a cost of about $3 million. Within parks and recreation, we've got $250,000 included for the replacement of the Carson baseball bleachers. As many of you are aware, if you've been out to the baseball park, the bleachers along both the first base as well as the third base lines are older metal bleachers. The bleachers along the third base line are portable, that is, they get moved over to the football stadium during, during the fall and get moved back to the baseball stadium. They really were not intended for that type of use, and they've reached the end of their useful life. So it's time to replace those bleachers with those that are ADA accessible and have safety features so that small children or others can't fall down between, between the risers. There's $100,000 being provided for the Southwest Dog Park and Boat Launch. This is a project that was in the current year CIP in 2019, but due to some, due to some cost issues, additional funding is needed to complete that project, and additional $100,000 is being included in, in this CIP. The fountain in Wilson Park has failed, and we are including $150,000 in this CIP to replace that fountain with some sort of other water feature. That could be a fountain, it could be a water feature similar to what is in Haymarket Plaza. We, staff intends to survey the neighborhood, work with the neighborhood association to determine exactly what they would like to see at that location. But $150,000 is being provided for the construction, the design, the engineering of a new water feature that would go into Wilson Park. $25,000 is included for a north side dog park, $410,000 to begin improvements at the Northwest Community Park, and $415,000 for the relocation of Roosevelt Park. As council may recall, we did, we acquired a land to the south of the existing Roosevelt Park to relocate that park at some point in the future. And the school district is interested in having what is now Roosevelt Park for the potential expansion of the, of the school. Within TID number nine, which is the Gateway Park area, we've included a land acquisition totaling about $4.5 million. Much of the land within the Gateway Industrial Park has topographic challenges that make it very difficult to develop for large industrial buildings. A lot of dirt needs to be moved to, to create a pad of sufficient size in order to attract large businesses and industries to that area. So we've included $4.5 million to acquire additional industrial land that is hopefully less topographically challenged than the existing Gateway Industrial Area. Within TID number 11, which is the downtown TID, there's a total of $10 million being provided for structured parking. As the city manager indicated before, this is a plan. This is out in the last year of this CIP. We know that there's going to need to be some structured parking within the downtown. We'll wait to see what the outcome of the parking study is, but there are estimates of somewhere around 1,000 parking stalls that will need to be, need to be constructed, and the current estimate is $26,000 per parking stall. So this very well may be half or less of the total amount that is eventually spent on, on structured parking. Within TID number 13, which is the cannery redevelopment area, which is area we'll be talking about on the next agenda item, there's $4.5 million included for street improvements within that particular area, and $3.8 million for park development. Now, I should point out that all of the projects within the TIDS are fully supported by the property taxes generated within those tax incremental districts. And then last, the, the library, $17 million is provided in this CIP for the library renovation and expansion. So that completes just an overview of the projects within the CIP. If this CIP is approved, it uses about $2.88 million in fund balance in 2020, requires approximately $7.6 million in new borrowing in 2020. It will increase debt service by approximately $415,000, which is, represents an increase of about 4.7% in 2021. It will cost the owner of a home valued at $174,000 about $13.68 per year. Now, as we discussed during the work sessions, and I just want to point this out, that our debt service curve, or the amount of debt that we're retiring in the future, particularly in the years 2023 through 2025, is not decreasing very much. So if we, if we continue to fund the projects that are included in this CIP for those years, 2023 through 2025, we're looking at average debt service increases of about, of about $967,000 per year. So you can see that this year we have a debt service increase of about $415,000, which equals about $13.68 per year. In those out years, if those projects continue to be in there, in the CIP and are eventually funded, you're, we're probably in the neighborhood of $26, $27 per year in debt service increases. Those numbers do not include the library. So the library project, as proposed, will require $8.5 million in new borrowing in 2020. It increases debt service by about $585,000 in 2021, and will cost the owner of that $174,000 house approximately $19 per year. So this $19 per year is on top of the $13.68 per year on the, on the previous slide for the non-library-related projects. So taking a look at the city council's financial policies, if this CIP is, is approved as, as proposed, our unassigned fund balance will continue to remain within the 15% to 20% identified by the city council and included in your fund balance policy. The goal is to have a 20%, a fund balance of 20% of the subsequent year's expenditures, but anything between 15% and 20% can be used for capital expenditures. So the green bar on the screen represents that 15% to 20% range. The purple bars represent what our fund balance is estimated to be. And as you can see, this is 2019, where, where my finger is now, and we're actually projecting our fund balance to increase in 2020 and then slowly decrease to around 18, between 18% and 19% in years 2023 and 2024 of the CIP. One of the council's other policies is that the levy for debt service shall not exceed 25% of the total property tax levy. So the green line here represents 25% of the total property tax levy. The blue line represents our historical debt service leading up to and through 2019. Then the red line represents what our debt service will be with the approval of this CIP. The trend that you can see is that our debt service has been slowly approaching this, this 25% of the total property tax levy. Our goal is to, at a minimum, have those lines run parallel rather than converging, and hopefully, long-term, be able to turn the debt service downward so that debt as a percent of the property tax levy is actually decreasing. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions, Mr. Winsens? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you so much, Mr. Winsens. Wondering if you could talk, please talk about a couple of things. The first one is around a question that I had asked via email a couple weeks ago around the fountain for Wilson Park. Maybe as a little background for what, what I, why I asked it is because I talked to somebody who, who may be working with the project if it is approved, and had been a similar person, same person who'd worked on the Haymarket Plaza and shared some perspectives. And I guess I'm wondering, during that conversation, I learned that the benefit of perhaps doing the improvements at Wilson Park that I didn't know about is that there's a lot of sound infrastructure that's already ready to go that wasn't present at Haymarket. So perhaps there would be a cost savings in the future if this were approved. I'm wondering if, if you could talk a little bit about perhaps what you shared with me of kind of the phases that it might go into and how it seems pretty likely that 150,000 wouldn't be utilized, and if that's the case, what would happen to that, any surplus funds?
Sure. You know, the, as, as the city manager indicated, the CIP is really a planning, is really a planning document, and this starts particularly for projects in 2020. This gives staff the green light to start planning for those projects for implementation in 2020. So, you know, we, we have to go through a, go through a design process and, and an engineering process on any, whatever we decide to do at Wilson Park, just like we did with the water feature at, at Haymarket, Haymarket Plaza. So we'll need to go through that process. The $150,000 is, is intended to provide sufficient funds to pay a, an architect or engineer to go through that process and design, design the fountain. We'll certainly, certainly bid it out as we have in the past, and, and, you know, you're correct, I mean, we've got water to that site. There may, we may need to replace the lateral just because it may be old, and we may want to do it at that time, but there is some infrastructure there that wasn't present in Haymarket Plaza. So the $150,000 is a, is a budget number, and if we don't spend those funds, any, any funds that remain unspent stay within the land building and equipment fund, and then we use those to, those funds to offset future years CIP projects. So they stay within that fund and really just reduce the funds we need in subsequent years to include, to pay for projects. But we'll hopefully have a better, a more refined number, you know, if we could get the green light, a more refined number later this year, and maybe even in time for the appropriation process in November.
Capable?
Yes, thank you. I just have one other question, different, totally different topic, and I don't know if you could answer this, or perhaps the chief might be able to answer on the body worn cameras. Just interested about the corresponding technology that would go with that of kind of storing all of the data on a cloud or wherever it may be. Do you anticipate that we currently have that information storage system available, or is that something we would also need to look at in addition?
Excellent question, and that's really one of the, one of the things that has probably delayed the implementation of this, at least up to this point. And I believe the, the system that the police department is, you know, most interested in at this point is a cloud-based system. So all of the, all of the video footage would be stored on the cloud, so it doesn't increase our IT requirements as far as investing in additional hard storage and backup facility, backup facilities. So all of that is, is done for us. Anything you want to add, chief?
Does that mean that, that is built into this 225,000?
Yes, that is, that is built into that cost, and, but there, I believe that there would then be ongoing annual expenditures associated with that, because obviously the more video footage you have, the more storage that they, and backup facilities they have to provide, the vendor has to provide, but that would be on the operating budget side of things.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Winsens. I am, I'm looking for information in the western part of our town where we have all these lovely residential trails. There were some questions that the neighborhood would like to participate in, and the first one that, under the transportation portion, the Hafn Trail that's going to be running up towards Folsom, just would like to have a little information about how citizens participate in that as opposed to waiting for an invitation. How would you suggest that the neighborhoods participate in ideas or concerns?
I'm going to actually defer to Jeff Pippencher on that, or maybe he's going to defer to Dave Solberg on that, one of the two, but they know more about the process, the design processes.
We'll watch the doors to make sure no one's leaving.
There are a number of trails that were in there that we work with, community services to identify long range so we can apply for DOT grants for those DNR grants. That was a trail that we applied for grant last year that we didn't receive from DOT. But what we do is we typically go to neighborhood associations, we'll have, try to have an open house either at a, at a public building, or a church, or a school, or something. We know the right of way, we're, we know the corridor where it's going, is the old railroad right of way. What's going to go in there is something that we want feedback from the community, you know, is it, you know, is it more comfortable to have it cleared out, you know, all of the trees from there and plant with ornamentals for safety, or to try to keep them mature trees, to keep more of a wildlife look through there? Those are all things that we'll have a series of open houses, and we'll probably have a website on our, on our, or a site on our website for comments like we do for Haymarket. We had that, as well as State Street and our, our projects that we're looking for more input that are not just your cookie cutter neighborhood street-type projects, try to seek that, as well as working with our partners in community service for how they tie into that future neighborhood park that's at the junction of the High Bridge Trail. And then, transportation-wise in our office, how we cross Ballenger Street to connect up to the existing portion that's there. So we try to get as much engagement and as, many opportunities as we can with that. So that one we haven't started on, we, we put the application in, that would have been out three to four years in the future yet if we would have gotten a DOT grant for that. So we, it's literally a blank slate that we would be looking. So we, it's literally a blank slate that we would be looking for that input when we get that. So, yeah, I'd more than happy to go to neighborhood associations and start the dialogue there. And if there isn't a neighborhood association in a particular spot, then we have those meetings ourselves and try to invite people.
So 2021, that, that won't be, there won't be any activity until late next year?
Well, what we, if it's city only funds on that, then, you know, we would try to keep it in that. So we wouldn't have any open houses this fall. We'd go next year. But if we apply for a grant and that shifts slightly to 2022, if that's when the state or federal funds would be available, then we would hold off a little bit longer on that and see if a different trail would come in as a higher priority. But, yeah, we, we're not anticipating anything until we're done with our construction season. Probably out in November would be the earliest we would start looking at some of those.
Could I have a follow-up, please? There's also some question that I heard from residents about the northwest community park and the trail configuration. There is, I'm seeing this as 2022, but there's work happening up there now. Could you just give me some?
I might have to defer my distinguished colleague from community services on the actual park itself.
Good evening, by the way. What is in for 2022 is for the community park in general, to put the parking lot in, put restrooms in, the amenities that we would expect in a community park. Within, and I would say it's been 10 years or more, we've actually been working with a group called Corva, it's Chippewa Valley Off-Road Bike Association. And they've developed a maze of trails through the system and they, they keep them up and they maintain them. And there are several areas where they go through the park and, you know, this is the area that we would likely come into this area and develop the area where we'd have a parking lot and a restroom and a pavilion, things that would invite the public to that area. But the trail system is meant to stay there. This is, you know, there's a large group that use that. And I think one of the areas that has been in question is particularly this area right here where the city has access to, to Gessner Road. And there's a trail that has been approved, and this has gone through the Waterways and Parks Commission for approval.
It already has?
Yes, yes, this has all been approved in the past.
Okay. So you actually would have the answer for my next question, which would be my last question, I do.
Sure.
So we, we've had conversations in the past about the relocation of Roosevelt Park and the property that the city has acquired near Folsom. So my question would be this, since the, the public conversation has always been about a neighborhood park and neighborhood input, the CIP specifically talks about moving Roosevelt Park and a skating rink. So my thought would be if, if our public conversation would be reflected in the CIP, I would like to see the, I would like to have it just say neighborhood park so that as this comes forward, it allows the neighborhood to weigh in on the importance of a skating rink or facilities for the elementary school. How, how might we begin that kind of a conversation?
Again, we've talked about this quite a bit in the past on what type of amenities make certain classifications of a park. We've talked earlier tonight about Forest Street and that's under the classification of a special area. When we look at a neighborhood park, we're looking at those amenities that typically would be in a neighborhood park, typically a restroom, a pavilion, playground equipment. In this area, Roosevelt is one of our more popular skating rinks. But again, when we get into the design and discussion with the neighborhood groups, we're going to ask them what they want. And if, if they elect not to put a skating rink in the area, that would be completely up to them. I mean, we'll put in what, you know, what should be in the neighborhood park. You know, we used to have 21 outdoor skating rinks. Now we only have nine. I think we actually maintained seven. But, you know, so we're down. And that's, in a survey that we did in 2016, the community actually asked for more outdoor skating rinks in the community that we, if we could handle adding those to some of our parks. So again, if the neighborhood, when we meet with them, they feel like the skating rink wouldn't be an amenity that they would like to see during the winter time, that's something that we can certainly do.
Okay. I, that, that provides the information I was looking for. Thank you so much, Mr. Pipinger.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. And actually, I think it might be for Mr. Pipinger, but I'll ask, I'll start with Mr. Winsens. But I was worrying about, and I meant to ask this earlier in our other meetings, and I apologize for asking earlier, but there's $25,000 to the North Side Dog Park in 2021 and it's my, I think it's for surveillance cameras, but I just wanted to confirm that.
That's correct.
All right. I do have.
Sure.
Okay, this is a different topic. I'm sure you know that the, the state budget allows now, passed with $75 million total for available grants with $19 million available for cities. And I was wondering if the city of Eau Claire will be going for that, those funds?
Well, we just got that notification for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities today and I haven't had a chance to, to talk with Mr. Solberg, but I'm, I'm sure we'll be submitting one or more applications for different, different projects.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public discussion, so is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Stinglegriggs and I'm here on behalf of my company this evening. My company is called Casual or Formal. It's loaded, located at the Artisan Forge Facility, 1106 Mondovi Road, Suite 224, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54701. And a platform of my company is improving public transportation. I am a metalsmith. I have a fine art jewelry company. We work mostly in galleries. And my jewelry very much tells a story. To give you a little bit of a background, back in 2013, I did a series of bus routes of Eau Claire where I took the bus routes of our city and proportionally reduced them to pendants to educate the public on how to use the bus system and increase interest. In 2016 to 2017, I was part of the Transit Commission for the city of Eau Claire. So I'm here today to thank you for putting within the CIP direct funding to the transit of all sorts, but specifically for the bus shelters themselves. We are discussing a lot about affordable housing and a key part of that pie should be the transportation for these individuals as well to increase prosperity so that they may get to jobs and other important life events. So this may be a seemingly little effort, putting bus shelters into the CIP and putting them around our city, but it can make a big, big difference to an individual riding the transit system in keeping them dry on a wet day so they arrive to their location dry and may brighten their day. So just wanted to come here this evening to thank you for including that in the CIP. Have a good night.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. I'm Judy Mosley. I reside at 2230 Trimble Street here in Eau Claire. I am a real estate salesperson with a brokerage firm in Eau Claire. I, I work on residential real estate transactions. And I'm also the co-chair of the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force. As a member of that task force, I have participated in the wider Chippewa Valley Affordable Housing Task Force. So as you can imagine, I was pretty pleased when I saw that $200,000 in funds had been included in the 2020 expenditures for the capital improvement plan. I really do believe that the citizens of our community can't afford to wait two or three more years for us to address this problem with some real dollars. So I was happy to see that that had been moved up on the schedule. But as with a lot of proposals, I also have a few concerns too. One concern is that if we're just moving $200,000 from year 2022 to 2020, then in 2022, we only have $50,000 to spend on affordable housing efforts that year. And it worries me a little bit that, you know, we have spikes in funding, that, you know, it's not more evenly spread out. But my larger concern is actually with the conceptual proposal that would use the dollars for the acquisition of vacant land on which would go single-family homes to developers. Now, I'm not opposed to incentives for developers. I like developer incentives. I'm also not opposed to single-family housing building. I think we need to do lots of that. But I do believe that we have a huge, complex need. We've talked about this a lot in other meetings and even tonight about how there is a wide range of need. And some of that need in our city is very, very critical. We have people living in substandard housing, paying more than a third of their rent, some more than a half of their month's income in rent for housing that neither you nor I would agree to ever live in. And so I think that that area of critical need has to be addressed when we only have a very small amount of money to spend on it. So I tried hard to figure out how $200,000 could possibly be spread to single-family housing. And I didn't come up with the number of 50 single-family houses. In, in order to have 50 single-family houses, even small houses on very small lots, you'd need five acres of land. And I can't imagine in the city of Eau Claire where you would buy five acres of land for $200,000, especially when you then had to pay money to improve it, put sewer, water, gutter, sidewalks, all the surveying. So I just don't see how $200,000 can possibly make that big of an impact if you're spending it on single-family housing. Now, if we had $32 million to spend on affordable housing, I would say, go for it. Spend $200,000 on single-family housing. And then spend some more on pocket neighborhoods. Spend some more on multifamily developments. Build a high-rise next to the river. Do everything. But we don't have millions of dollars. We have for the year 2020, $200,000 to spend on making an impact in affordable housing. Now, as a member of the Chippewa Valley Housing Task Force, a lot of stakeholders in the city of Eau Claire got together and spent over a year coming up with recommendations for the city of Eau Claire and the city of Altoona for how to address affordable housing issues. There's two recommendations that I think are worth noting tonight. One is a consensus statement on page one of the recommendations that says housing supply in the Chippewa Valley is insufficient to meet current need and demand in every income category and housing type. The most acute need is for quality rental housing that is affordable for persons of low income. So they talk about what the most important need is right now. But one of the actual recommendations is on page six and it says, focus limited public resources on those persons not well-served by the private housing market. And to me, that means when we only have a small amount of money to spend, spend it where you get the most bang for your buck and where the need is the greatest. So I would like to urge you to, yes, include that $200,000 in the 2020 expenditures, but please, spread it out a little more, make it for multifamily housing. Let's get the most bang for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Any questions? Thank you for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to start out just by thanking the council for opening up dialogue on all the issues that are included in our capital improvement budget. My name's Neil Miller and I'm a recent graduate from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. I graduated in December and I held residence here for three and a half years. Up until June, I was at 321 Lake Street, right down the block from where this meeting is taking place. I now reside in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and I'm here to address the council on the issue of $20,000 allocated for the Boyd Park skateboarding, skateboarding facility. Now, skateboarding has always played a very important role in my life. I've been a skateboarder for almost 18 years and it's been a foundational aspect of what I consider to be who I am today and who I've become. And I think the city of Eau Claire would have the money well-spent to be able to provide that opportunity to each one of the citizens that would like to do that as well. Our skateboarding facility currently is about 2,400 square feet and it is located just west of here, near Carson Park. To put in perspective, Menominee Skate Park serves a population that is roughly one-third of the size of Eau Claire and their skateboarding facility has about four times the square footage that our skateboarding facility has here. Working through the university as well as Mark Ruddy, the president of the Boyd Park Plus Project, we realized that the city of Eau Claire not only needs a new skate park to provide that opportunity to its residents here, but also to increase accessibility for residents who live in each part of the city. There are more skateboarders here than is what is being recognized. That money that's being allocated will be able to increase opportunities for a wide variety of users and I think that's very important. When you look at many other population centers, just in March, St. Cloud, a city similar in size to Eau Claire, allocated $1.1 million to construct a new skate park for their city. New Richmond, just to the west of us, has $125,000 that was allocated in 2016 to build a new skateboarding facility. During the Boyd Park Plus Improvement Project that I worked through with the university, I did a heart rate study where I put on a heart rate monitor and I went to each single skate park in our surrounding area, Chippewa Falls, Cornell, Eau Claire, and Menominee. And I found that my heart rate was elevated at all the skate parks that had more square footage. That means that I was gaining the most health benefits from being at these larger skateboarding facilities and utilizing my time spent exercising. I think that that opportunity would be well-spent and is well-deserving of any funds that could be allocated from the city council. From any research that I've been able to do, Eau Claire has one of the smallest skate parks in the entire state of Wisconsin. We, as the sixth largest population center in our state, I believe that we should be able to represent that to all of our recreational users. Eau Claire prides itself on having a very outgoing population of individuals who like to pursue the outdoors and express themselves through recreation. I would like to be able to give that opportunity to skateboarders as well as all the other members of the community who desire to be outdoors and express themselves to that means. That's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thanks for coming up.
Hold on one second. Just one moment. If, if you have a question, I would just rather you wait until, are you coming up to speak?
I'd be more.
Of the council, I'm sorry.
Oh, the council, okay. I have a question about.
Any questions from council? I would also just remind the audience that to refrain from applause as much as I don't want to dismay the excitement and happiness, but it does take away from the meeting and also the opportunity for others to speak. So if we could save that until the end, I would appreciate it. Anything else, Mr. Miller?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Kemp. I reside at 632 Putnam Drive where I've done so for nearly 20 years. On the other side of the. Well, on the other side of this. So first off, I'm going to speak tonight just briefly about, about the same issue that Mr. Miller spoke about a few moments ago, the allocation of funds in the CIP Capital Improvement Plan for a skate park or skateboard facility at Boyd Park. Before I get into that, I would like to thank city staff and city council, however, for, for putting these plans together. Um, it's going to be a very daunting and, um, difficult task to spend great amounts of your time and, you know, professional effort putting these plans together, only to then present it in a public forum and have the same public then pick it apart. Um, so hats off to everybody, really. Greatest respect in the whole process. We heard a little earlier this evening about parks and how parks are developed and what facilities go into park, and the words that were used was, "We put typical facilities or typical amenities into the park." Okay? Playgrounds, basketball courts, so on and so forth. But of course, nothing is typical until it is. Right? So if we think about a park 150 years ago, it would certainly have not included a baseball diamond. Baseball became popular 120 years ago, roughly. Baseball diamonds appear everywhere across the nation. They become typical. Prior to the 1960s and early 1970s, very few communities had tennis courts. Tennis then became very popular. A lot of people started playing tennis, and now tennis courts are, uh, of course, present in, in communities of any size. You go into a very small community, tennis courts are still, still there, right? They became typical. Uh, I am now 46 years old. I've been a skateboarder for 35 years. Long time, right? Long time. I heard somebody say earlier today, "It's a passing fad." Well, waiting for it to pass. You know, I, I've seen skateboarding become a lot more typical in those 35 years. But we don't think of it that way still. We still think of it as something, as a special user group. A special group of people is sort of doing this thing that's different from what the rest of us are all doing. But that's not really the case anymore. A large group of people, the design of skate parks has come a long way. Back in the 1980s, early skate parks in the 1990s, indeed the skate park we have here, is really designed to be set apart. Right? Here's the skate park, here's everything else. But of course, skate parks don't have to be that way. They can blend in with the surrounding area. They can be easily accessible to users of all types. Somebody on a bicycle wants to take a tool through the skate park, you know, maybe like a skier might want to take a tool through the, the, what do they call those bumps on ski hills? I forget those. Yeah, not a skier, moguls, right? Somebody, some skis wants to take a run through the moguls? Go for it. You're rolling through the park on roller blades, you dip down, come back up a little bit? Sure, go for it. You can design skate parks that way. You can design skate parks so people of all types can enjoy, they can play in what's going on there. And I would love to see something like that happen here. I would love to see places where, you know, people come together, they can do different things, and enjoy each other's company. And I've seen that happen across this city in the 20 years I've lived here. There's now a lot of places where we come together as a community. I think if we see this that way, if we see it as something that's typical rather than something that's atypical or extraordinary, which it isn't really, as we've heard a moment ago from Mr. Miller and we'll hear, I'm sure, from others later tonight, now, communities all around us have devoted significant space to skate parks. On a per capita basis, Eau Claire, of course, legs way behind the rest of the state. And that's not necessarily, uh, I don't, I don't mean to imply any type of, um, failure of any sort. Uh, maybe, uh, there's a variety of reasons why that's happened. But it certainly implies that our measure of typical, um, maybe isn't as typical as we think. Uh, and that, that maybe we need to look at what other communities are doing a little bit, uh, with these types of things and get on board with this. I see that my time is running out, so I just want to say one final thing that I'm sure you hear from others. Although I've made the argument this is a typical effort and shouldn't require, or typical thing to do, and shouldn't require any extraordinary effort, an extraordinary effort has been undertaken by several individuals towards this effort. Large amounts of money have been raised by people who are users of this, but more than users of skate parks, they are passionate about what they're doing. I've worked with many of these folks now for better than a decade. They are passionate about what they're doing. They are making it happen. They are making the typical happen through their own extraordinary efforts. And I would also would like to applaud them. Take a minute to think about that. Now, we don't ask basketball players to, first of all, organize, right? First of all, organize, then raise money, then try to explain to the rest of the community why we should have basketball courts. If that happened, it would be, it would be, uh, we would all be flabbergasted, right? We don't ask the tennis players to organize, present their case, raise money, and then sell it to the community. It simply happens because it's typical, right? So it's, you know, in terms of what's being discussed here, it's small potatoes. But I, I thank everybody here, staff, council as well, for considering these small potatoes because it's a good thing that's going to affect a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Aaron Salmon. Uh, I live at 638 Putnam Drive. Uh, I just wanted to speak, um, to the amendment proposed by council member Gregert and council member Worthman to divert, um, uh, some money from the parking technology and wayfinding, um, into its own line item for bicycle parking. Um, I serve as the chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Um, I've been the chair for two or three years, and prior to that, I was, I served as a member of the board. And, uh, this is something that's come up numerous times, um, over the past few years, um, requests from, uh, citizens or, uh, requests from, uh, the commission itself to include, uh, additional bicycle, bicycle parking, um, at various facilities and buildings in the city. And there hasn't ever been a good mechanism to actually fund, fund those racks. So this would, this would provide that. We spoke about this at, uh, the last BPAC meeting. Uh, we were all very supportive of it. Um, I think it's a fantastic idea. Many of the, many of the racks at, uh, city facilities are pretty outdated, um, kind of geared to more towards adolescent bikes from 15 years ago. We called them wheelbender racks. They caused quite a bit of damage to bicycles that are parked there. So those need to be replaced, and there are many, many parks and facilities that need additional parking, um, as the demand for, um, bike parking has increased over the last few years. So, um, I'm very supportive of it. BPAC was supportive of it, and I think it's a great idea. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
My name is Emily Shields, 1611 Western Avenue. Currently here on the affordable housing issue, my family and I consist of two adults, three children, and a baby on the way. It's very unlikely that my family would qualify for a single-family housing unit. There is a need for affordable housing rentals that families like mine can qualify for. I'm actually the property out, I'm actually the property manager out at Maples Mobile Home Trailer Court, where currently 27 families may end up homeless due to a lack of affordable housing and the significant depleting conditions that these tenants are living in. If we had a more affordable housing that wasn't a singleton family unit, an area where we're able to house more families, the homeless rate and the rate that people live paying over three-quarters of their income to rent would go down. We would be able to have more people in affordable housing where they can make a living and then go off of that low income into a better living where they can then become homeowners. Children of these families are faced with uncertainty. My trailer court consists of seven families who have children who are school age. These children don't know what's going to happen. We are on a time crunch and had affordable housing, um, had there been more affordable housing in the past, we may have been able to prevent the chance of 27 families who are low-income with barriers, who are typically screened out on a process of backgrounds or income similar sorts. It negatively affects families and their children when these children don't know if they're going to have a roof over their head to sleep in or where they're going to go to school because of the zoning districts. The residents at Maples are currently paying a low-income rate of $400 or less a month. They are living in very poor conditions, and it's not fair, when there is a lack of affordable housing, that people must live in these conditions because that's all that they can afford. That is all that they are able to afford to make a living. We can change that for many people in Eau Claire, not just Maples. We can address the low income by shifting from the singleton family units to a more multi-based, low-income housing, where we can house more families at a more affordable rate, and we could bring that homeless rate down significantly if it wasn't singleton family units. I really worry about the units, only 50 of them. We can house 50 families over plenty more. I would like to see that changed a little bit, um, just to more benefit the residents and, and the people of Eau Claire who, there's less than a 2% availability rate, and a lot of these people are locked out. They can't get in anywhere else. They can't afford anywhere else to go. And that is, it's scary. Dealing with that firsthand, I'm the property manager, I'm also a resident, knowing that I'm not the only one out there with this situation, and seeing what my tenants go through on a daily basis of really not knowing what's going to come next, well, what's out there for affordable housing? And my answer is always the same: there's not much. And there's not much you'll qualify for. Um, and that's not the answer I should have to give my tenants, so.
Any questions for Ms. Shields? Thanks for coming up.
I'm Dre Green, 1611 Western Avenue. Thank you for opening discussion. I'm here to talk about the affordable housing. In my situation, Maples was a last resort of finding affordable housing a year ago. We need more affordable housing, and we need to expand the restrictions on our current rental applications to allow some of these families to be able to rent and to be able to find, um, housing that's affordable, um, based on, you know, their rentals, rental evictions, their backgrounds, you know, and the financial limitations for some of these faible, families to find safe and affordable housing. So I would just like to thank you. I would like to say that, you know, um, great efforts that are being made for the affordable housing, and I hope we can, can, can continue to, um, expand our affordable housing.
Any questions for the speaker? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Crystal Buckey. Um, I am a resident at 1611 Western Avenue as well, and a resident of Maples. Um, I think affordable housing is very, very important, um, in regards to people like me and my husband, who only have one income. Um, my husband is a sole provider, income-wise, so he only gets like 864 from Social Security and bi-weekly about 150. Me and my husband were just displaced and placarded from our trailer because of the conditions of it, our roof caved in. And it, we didn't choose to live in those conditions, it just, we can't find anywhere else to live. And when we were given that place, we were hoping to fix it up and live there and start a family, everything like that. It's just, it's very hard when income is so low, and when it comes to affordable housing, it's not very much out there. Like, just recently, I was, um, on the phone with someone through EMB Rentals, um, and she said that she wouldn't even let us sign the application because our income is too low. And right now, DHS is housing us in a hotel, and not a great hotel either. We live in, we're staying at Regency, and we're only there till Friday. And after Friday, we don't know what's going to happen. So I'm really concerned and worried about where we're going to live. I have to live somewhere with electricity because I have medical equipment. Um, I rely on a seat bat machine. I cannot be on the streets. I also suffer from a lot of physical disabilities, mental disabilities, and my husband suffers from mental disabilities as well. And I think that, basically, I think that housing should be more affordable, and there should be more options available as well. And I have tried applying for city housing. City housing is full. We, and they also said, "Contact county housing." Well, I was just told there's a year waiting list. So I feel like there should be more options out there, and I feel like it's very important to focus on that and know that there are people out there like me who are struggling day-to-day of where they're going to live. And there's families in Maples as well who are struggling and who are scared. So that's what I have to say, so.
Thanks for coming up.
Yep.
Any questions for Ms. Buckey? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Trisha Simpson. I live at Maples Mobile Home Park.
It's okay. Take your time.
Okay. My name is Trisha Simpson. I live at Maples Mobile Home Park. I've lived there for six years. I've been residing in the, there only on July 10th of 2019, a ground inspection in which I was told to come outside by Emily Shields, my park manager. I came outside and was told, Tate, told by Tate, the city health inspector, I had 30 days to move. I was displaced, and he said, "My roof was at sound." I have a small dip in my kitchen in my living room, who's been there for many, many years. I live in my home with my daughter, my granddaughter, and my husband and I. We live on very little income. I had a meeting with Susan, Emily, Dre, in which, at this time, Dre Green, out of the kindness of her heart, said that I could move into her trailer at 32. She'll be moving. I will be moving the 1st of August, and I will be there until further notice. How long? No idea. There's no affordable housing for families in this area. Housing is way too expensive on a limited income. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Lauren Devine, 2214 Peters Drive. So I live on the West Ridge. I want to thank you for addressing these issues. Um, and it's, it seems like we have a very professional city staff who's spent a lot of time, um, developing these plans, so I definitely thank you for all the work there. We, we definitely need, um, affordable housing. I, it, it's definitely some, some tough challenges, so I appreciate you working on that. But, um, I came to here tonight to speak on behalf of, of need for, you know, in addition to affordable housing, there, um, there also needs to be affordable recreation as well. And that's where, um, uh, skate parks and stuff came in. I was actually at our Lake Shore Park today with my family. I have a six-year-old and a, a three-year-old and my wife, and we actually met a family who, we'd met actually last year. Uh, they're from Maryland, and they're in town visiting, um, relatives, and they have kids my kid's age. And their kids and my kids ended up playing. We were at the skate park for a while. Uh, they're riding their little BMX bikes. Uh, and then we went to Carson Park and played on the new playground there. And we went between the two parks on the bike trail. So those are all, um, activities that are, are public infrastructure that help benefit a lot of people. They can be used for both transportation and recreation in a, in a time where, you know, there's, there's talk about obesity crisis and stuff like that. I think public facilities that are both visually attractive and, uh, but also promote activity are, are good. A lot of times, um, you know, there's a big emphasis on, on benches and sculptures and stuff, which is nice and fun to look at, but, uh, a facility like a, a skate park, uh, can, can be, all of that can provide, can provide both a recreation seating area, it's a common meeting place, it's a, it's a place for people to gather. Um, and it, it can actually, uh, well-designed, one can draw people in. Uh, I myself have driven to New Richmond. I know plenty of people who drive from Eau Claire to even smaller towns because they have a well-designed facility that, that is, is challenging. And that, um, that creates opportunities for, for collaboration and, um, and it can be, and those are low-cost, um... So the city investing in that definitely helps people of all, all levels and publicly-accessible infrastructure like that. I also just want to touch on the fact that, well, commonly referred to as skate parks just because skateboarders are a primary and prime user of it, and oftentimes the ones organizing and raising money and helping design them. They can be used by skateboarders, roller skaters, roller bladers, bikers, practitioners of parkour. I've seen videos of RC car drivers, and things like that, all using the ramps and features for various things. And just one final point, a skate park can not only be a form of recreation and skills development, but it could even launch a potential career. There are a couple pro skateboarders and even pro bikers. We even have a, there's even a professional BMX rider. He currently lives in Minneapolis, but he grew up in Chippewa, and he developed his skills riding around this area. So because of the nature of the breaking into that industry, developing your skills, and with just nowadays with the internet and sites like Instagram and stuff, a young person can go and they can develop their skills, they can get video of themselves, they can post that on things like Instagram, and some have gotten discovered and have actually made lucrative careers for themselves by using this technology. And so that, you know, and things like public skate parks. So it could not only provide a form of recreation, but in certain small circumstances, it can actually lead to a potential career that better's their life overall. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Hello, everybody. I like all the smiles. It's good to see all of you. My name's Chris Johnson. I live at 1104 Fairmont Avenue. Been a resident of Eau Claire for 27 years. I own Passion Board Shop downtown by the library. I've owned that for a little over five years. Kind of crazy to own a business selling skateboards in a town where one person can skate at a time. But somehow, I'm still doing it, probably because there's a lot more skateboarders than that. If you look at all the different things that we've been building, especially if you look at down by Haymarket Plaza and all that, in the Confluence Center, there's all this new stuff to skate, and it's kind of mind-blowing. I got invited to do, set up at the Film Festival for, you know, active outdoor stuff. And I'm set up with a booth talking about skate parks, and I'm looking at a skate park right outside that's not for skateboarding. That costs a whole lot more than what a skateboard park costs. I was, I don't know if you watch the RCU commercials, everyone reaches out to me now because I was on all of their ads. You go through their drive-throughs and all that, it's always, you know, me talking about the bank and gripping a skateboard. And then we asked them to help us pay for the skate park, and they wouldn't give us any money. And this is the type of thing that happens all the time, which is kind of mind-blowing, that we accept that skateboarding is this big thing, right? We're talking about how it's typical, which everyone knows it is. Skateboarding's in the Olympics next year. You can't, you can't argue it. This is a mainstream activity. It's been around for a long time. It's not going anywhere. The Tony Hawk video games were one of the best-selling things ever in media. It's always going to be around. But when we don't have facilities for it, kids end up going in the street, and then they're damaging property, they're being called criminals from everybody, they're getting tickets from the city, they're being told, like, from my parents, for example, "It wasn't an organized sport, it wasn't respected. I had an ongoing offer from my dad to give me $200 cash if I quit skateboarding from when I was 10." Yet somehow, here I am, making a career out of it. And I'm still a little bit of a delinquent, according to some people, because of it. When we have skateboarding be something that's illegal, we don't give a proper place to do it, you're teaching all of these kids that they're criminals and what they're doing isn't acceptable, isn't worth anybody's time, and you're putting them down. Unfortunately, these kids are impressionable, and when you tell them that, they're gonna believe it. So when you're out, when they're out skating and somebody goes, "Hey, you can't do that. You're a criminal. Can you read? Can you blah, blah, blah?" They start to eat into that, and they believe in that. And that's why you see all of these similarities, and you see skateboarding, and then you see drugs, and you see, you know, other crime that happens. It's because you have these kids being told that they're criminals from everybody around them, and no one's respecting what they're doing. We're not giving skateboarding lessons during FIED. We don't talk about it, you know? We don't, we don't, like I said, have facilities for it. The fact that I was up by my cabin, and I went and saw fireworks at Cable, Wisconsin, and their skate park is, I think, bigger than ours? It's unincorporated. How does that have a bigger skate park than ours? It's, it's mind-blowing, but that's everywhere. Hayward Skate Park is way bigger than ours. Rice Lake Skate Park is bigger. Barron Skate Park is bigger. Every park is. And I've been around, so I've skated all these ones around here. It's frankly ridiculous that our skate park is as small as it was. When we got that park built, I was at the city council meetings for that as well, that was supposed to be supplemental to the YMCA park. That park was bigger. The reason it didn't get used because there was a fence around it, it cost money, it had limited hours. It's not because people didn't want to use it, it just wasn't accessible. We got our tiny little park built, and then the YMCA park was closed. So now, all of a sudden, we have a park that literally one person can use at a time, which is just not acceptable. From that point on, and when we got that park, it was known that it was too small for the area, and we needed to build more parks. And the plan was every few years, we would be building more parks. Eventually, we'd have 10 to 12 all around town. Somehow, seven years later, that got lost. Between me and, there's quite a few people here about the skate park that feel uncomfortable standing and talking in front of people, but between all of us, we've raised now just over $50,000 for a new skate park in town. Fifty grand. Skate parks cost a lot more than that. And we're talking about $20,000, which I'm very appreciative that we're talking about giving that, and I think absolutely we should get that much money. But they did a $200,000 or $250,000 upgrade alone to Burnsville Skate Park. So if we're talking about 70 grand, that's still another small skate park. So please think, what I asked before was, I would like to see the city council find a way to match the funds that kids have raised, which I think is more than right. Even then, we would still have a small skate park, and even then, we're still going to continue to fundraise and push for more parks in the future. But please don't look at this as a one-time little $20,000 thing. That is peanuts, and this is a much bigger problem that we have to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Sean Putnick. I live at 2746 Street in Eau Claire, and I am the president of the new Upper West Side Neighborhood Association. Our organization formed over concerns about the bike trail and the deconstruction, or the destruction of natural woods and wild area along the current and newly proposed bike trail and park areas. There are many homeowners whose backyards border the Half Moon, new Half Moon Trail that's going to be going in. Some of these homeowners have landscaped the area beautifully, and they don't want to see their work destroyed. There is also an abundance of wildlife that live in these wooded and natural areas, such as fox, deer, hawks, other birds. Their habitats have continued to shrink, and it has become more difficult to find wonderful places like these to enjoy and explore. We would implore the council to keep in mind, and to aim for minimal disturbance of these areas when putting in the trails. I know from, we heard from Jill, and I think Jeff, that there's going to be ongoing discussions about what will and will not happen, and go, and, so I'm not going to go into what the neighbors do and do not want at this moment, I guess. We'll save that for later. But we would propose that you look instead to the, instead of moving the Roosevelt Park across the street to in between the two trails, that it would be looked at an existing park area on First and Maple Street. It currently has a baseball field, a basketball court, a small playground, and a warming house. There's plenty of room for skating and hockey. This would centralize the skating area, so another one would not be needed in the Canary District Park. This could also be a multipurpose field for soccer and softball. If more property is needed for parking, then there's a property across the street from that between Second and Third where the Reach Building used to be. And that could be parking for that area, possibly. Making better use of this property would favorably impact the city's budget and meets the needs and wants of our neighbors in our neighborhood association. We look forward to working with the city council on all the projects in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Putnick. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks so much for your time and all this energy that you've put into these plans.
Thank you.
There, it's really interesting to hear how Eau Claire is growing. My name is Diana Omtavet. I live at 2737 Seventh Street in Eau Claire. I am a steering committee member for the Upper West Side Neighborhood Association, and I very much look forward to working with you and the involved departments of the city throughout the entire planning and implementation process of the Half Moon Trail Project. This trail project literally runs through the heart of and extends through most of the length of our neighborhood association, which is the largest neighborhood association in the city at this point. Our desire is to have an ongoing voice at this table. We here have a chance to make this signature portion of the whole citywide trail system by preserving the unique natural beauty that is currently there and capitalizing on the unique natural features it has. It is unique in that it is a historic neighborhood of the city and would be the only remaining lengthy wooded portion of the state, of the citywide trail system. Let's capitalize on what's there in a forward-thinking way. There are very new and different ideas of what a park is. A neighborhood park can be many things, and so we are interested in moving that idea forward. We will be inviting each of you individually over the summer and the autumn to join us in a walk and experience this exceptional area and see for yourself how this can enhance our citywide system and increase the livability of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Any questions? Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Hello. I'm Ruth Addicks, and I live at 611 10th Street in Altoona. I'm here to speak about the need for affordable housing. Many years ago, I was a single working mother, and I remember the experiences of that and the experience of needing to find a good livable situation for myself and my daughter. I'm a homeowner now with my husband, and I'm also the parent of a young woman who has disabilities. My daughter's 38, and her income is extremely limited. I mean, someone who's on the kind of income limits that my daughter is on can't even receive money, like, from a relative or someone else to help them with their living expenses. If you do, I've been told that money would be deducted then from her, from her income. So there's a lot of people out there who have special needs, whose parents aren't going to live forever, and who will need to have places to live. Informed by these experiences and by paying a little more attention, I attend the Jona Affordable Housing, Accessible Housing Team meetings. I also attended the conference that was in town last week, two days, talking about issues related to affordable housing. So I really have put time and energy trying to understand these issues. Also, not to say I'm, I'm an Altoona resident not paying attention to Altoona, last Friday I did sit in on a meeting that the city was having around the development that's going in on Devney Street. And as we talked about that development, I was really happy to hear that, you know, it's not, the residents and people who will live there and be able to have apartments there, it's not all worked out yet. People can still make application. And the mayor told me that the, like, the efficiency, they're really small, I got a tour, the efficiency would be like $275 a month, that includes all expenses. So we're really talking affordable housing, and they, they range in terms of size of apartment, that sort of thing. So I really, as I've talked to people about this, they basically, you know, people are just really interested, like, where is this? And how could I help somebody I know sign up for this? And gee, they're going to be filled so fast, you know, the need is so great. I don't think I've been anywhere where I've mentioned this, and people's ears haven't sort of perked up and wanted to know more about this and how people can have access to it. I also really, it came home to me, some of the disparities involved in housing, as I was attending that conference last week, things related to ethnicity, disadvantage related to that, inherited wealth, and maybe we're thinking inherited wealth is a lot of money. It's not necessarily, it might be the money to put a down payment on the home, a home, or partial down payment on the home, which a lot of people just, it's not within their reach to do. Also, the issue related to wages, and the fact that wages aren't going up, but, you know, the cost of housing is going up. And that's very much true in this community, and Mr. Peters, you spoke to that earlier in this evening. So many households are just one unfortunate event, and when I say households, I mean renters as well, are one unfortunate event. Illness, maybe the loss of a job, maybe the loss of hours on the job, some kind of health or financial crisis away from losing their home, losing their apartment, being at risk for homelessness. And this is such a significant issue in our communities, in Deau Claire, Altoona, Chippewa Valley area. It's, it's current. It's not something that's going to be down the road. It's an immediate need, an immediate issue. And so I'm just here to ask that the city really look at this. I know you are. I know that you're committed and dedicated to this. But I ask you to look a little more at how you're allocating these dollars that you have, this $250,000, $200,000, in terms of how it'll have its greatest reach immediately. So that's my request. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Addicks. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name's Gabe Brummett. I live at 1907 Badger Avenue in Eau Claire. So I'm here, there's a lot of important issues on the table tonight.
losing their apartment, being at risk for homelessness. And this is such a significant issue in our communities, in Deau Claire, Altoona, Chippewa Valley area. It's, it's current. It's not something that's going to be down the road. It's an immediate need, an immediate issue. And so I'm just here to ask that the city really look at this. I know you are. I know that you're committed and dedicated to this. But I ask you to look a little more at how you're allocating these dollars that you have, this $250,000, $200,000, in terms of how it'll have its greatest reach immediately. So that's my request. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Addicks. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. My name's Gabe Brummett. I live at 1907 Badger Avenue in Eau Claire. So I'm here, there's a lot of important issues on the table tonight. I want to talk to you about skate parks, however. I moved here in 2009, and I, I had never lived in a town where there was no public skate park. So I immediately emailed Parks and Rec, and I got in touch with the then-director, Phil Fever. And he sat me down, and we went through everything that had been done by groups in the past. It started in like 2006 that they were, the parks was first approached about a public skate park. And nothing had been done in a couple of years, so I don't know. I did what I could. I had a job at the YMCA Skate Park. I met a lot of the kids, they're not kids anymore, but some of the people that are here tonight. I met them there. And I'd say between 2006 and 2013, when Lake Shore Skate Plaza was built, we managed as a group to raise about $1,000. We didn't have a lot of momentum. We didn't have a space to organize. We didn't, we were just all over the place. But since we've had Lake Shore Park, we've managed to use it to do fundraisers, to, it's a community space for us to just be. We've managed to raise $50,000, and I think having Lake Shore was a huge part of that. Having public space for our community to get out and play creatively in, like, an unstructured manner, and that's, that's what skate parks are for. Like, it's not just, they're called skate parks, but like, like someone mentioned earlier, it's, it's for the entire community. You don't have to ride a skateboard to go there. It's for scooters, bikes, kids who want to just run around. Like, when I take my, my kids there, like, they want to ride their scooters, and they want to run and slide, even though, you know, I got them skateboards. They're not interested. It's okay. But, you know, like, I'm happy that they have that space to go to. And the, the best thing about having these public free skate parks is that they are, I mean, they're open to anyone who wants to go there, regardless of income, regardless of age, regardless of anything. Like, if you're there riding and having fun, then you're part of that crowd. And the fact that we have such a, you know, we have a pretty big, growing city, and we have this limited space, it's, I would, I would support, I would, I would highly support some money being put towards this project, considering how much the skaters and our supporters have raised since 2013. I think it's phenomenal that we've managed to raise that much money. I don't know. That's all I have to say, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Brummett. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Aver, and I live at 1621 Russ Street. And I'm also a part of the Eau Claire Skaters Association, and I've been helping out, I believe, since 2014. I have two children that skateboard. I just want to remind folks that not every child participates in team sports. It's not everybody's jam. You know, there are, there are students out there and kids that just want to do their own thing, and skateboarding is perfect, perfect for any kid out there, including the underserved population that we have. In brief, I'm just requesting that in the future, with all capital planning, when it comes to parks, please consider a skate park in the neighborhood skate parks. And I would also say that it would be awfully nice if we could have some city money contributed to the $50,000 that we've already collected. I do want to end in, I've been reading a leadership book by Brené Brown. It's called Dare to Lead, and she talks about daring leaders, how they must care for and be connected to the people that they lead. She used her research and her work with teachers as an example of benefits of connection and care. The following quote reminded me about one of the reasons why we are working so hard to get this park built, and also how the leaders of our city could impact the children of the community that they have been charged to lead. The quote is, "We must be guardians of a space that allows students to breathe and be curious and explore the world and be who they are without suffocation. They deserve one place where they can rumble with vulnerability and their hearts can exhale. And what I know from the research is that we should never underestimate the benefit to a child of having a place to belong, even one, where they can take off their armor. It can and often does change the trajectory of their life." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aver. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dane Neville. I reside at 1211 Taft Avenue. Two weeks ago, I came and spoke to you guys a little bit about skateboarding. And again, I was invited to come talk tonight. But as I was listening to previous speakers, I found it impossible to do so without saying that I stand in solidarity with those looking for affordable housing. It's absolutely crucial. Last week, you know, I was thinking, what, what could I possibly say that wouldn't already have been said to you guys at this point? And I was walking around town right before the storm, and I walked through the Confluence Project, and I thought, wow, this is, this is so special. This is so beautiful. And I kept walking along the bike trail, and I stopped, and I needed to tie my shoe. And as I'm stopping, I looked at this fence, you know, one of these metal fences? And it was so bright green. It looked absolutely beautiful. I thought, wow, this is so special. And I'm tying my shoe, and then I looked more closely at the fence, and all around it is weeds and overgrown grass. And in fact, it wasn't a new fence at all. It was covered in rust and flaking paint. It had just been freshly painted. And it was so close to the Confluence Project, it really made me wonder what kind of, what kind of lasting habits this city has in mind. What kind of, what kind of real development are we going to do? Are we going to let communities like those with insecure housing and the skateboarders become like that fence and be gilded with paint whenever it looks unsightly? Or are we going to include these communities in our Confluence? You know, it, it really is a wonder, because for such a seafoam green, it really didn't stand out on the grass until I looked at it. And, you know, I thought, this is, this is pretty gross, that, you know, we would spend so much money to do something so grand, and we would neglect the small things in our city. And it seems like the more we pull away from that habitual neglect of small things, the better our community becomes. You know, there's no beautiful quilt made with only coarse threads. The finest things take the smallest fabrics. And I just want to say that I appreciate you guys' time. There's a comprehensive plan in place, and I just advocate to all that it must include skate parks, and it must include more affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
My name is Mark Ruddy. I'm at 1016 Dodge Street. I also honor the folks who are speaking from their heart tonight on the need for affordable housing. So thank you very much. I'm here to speak about the skateboard park. I want to point out the opportunity that this is a unique time to, for us in Eastside Hill, who've invited the skateboarders to be part of our park. We've just successfully raised the first phase of funding in our project called Boyd Park Plus, which is, allows us, working with Jeff Peppinger, to work with a professional landscape designer and heirs' associates to, to make a conceptual plan for Boyd Park. So this is the ideal time for the skateboard folks to come forward and say, okay, we do have the money, so that, that designer can take that reality of a skateboard park into the planning, and so it complements the other activities that are going to be as part of the park. It's just the ideal time. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddy. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Anderson, and I live at 4334 Heartland Drive West. And I was very intrigued by Mr. Peters' analysis of the affordable housing problem, that it's not that rents are too high, but that wages are too low. So I'm wondering if I'm safe in assuming that the city staff is going to start working on a plan to move businesses in our community from where they are to paying a living wage. I know that Wisconsin law right now prohibits municipalities from enacting living wage legislation, but I have a lot of confidence in you and this, the whole staff that the city council directs and gives orders to, to come up with something that would get to the root cause of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any questions? Thanks for coming up. Good evening.
It's late, isn't it? My name is Jenny Chapit. I live at E. 3860 Redwood Drive, south of Eau Claire. I am, I guess, these days, a housing advocate with professional experience in both our low-income Section 8 programs, as well as our homeless rapid rehousing programs, with experience in actually housing people from our homeless shelters into rental apartments. So I know firsthand the challenges of affordable housing and, you know, many of the barriers that we heard tonight. I can absolutely vouch for, and they're not exaggerating. If, if anybody has any barriers whatsoever, their only chance they have of getting a rental is first, last, and double security. First month's rent, last month's rent, and double security. And if you're looking at $600 a month, that's $2,400 that somebody's expected to come up with, who already doesn't have any income and multiple barriers ahead of them. So actually, that wasn't what I was going to come and speak about tonight. I was just really moved by, by hearing the voices of many. And I want to, you know, unfortunately, most of them left, but I want to make sure to acknowledge the strength that they had in coming up here and speaking about their experiences, because I don't know that I could do the same if I were faced with housing insecurity, and thankfully, I'm not. But I don't know that I could do the same. So just the amount of strength that took for them, I'm, I'm very impressed. And so what I try to do is use my voice for the people who don't feel like they have one, or for the people who are too afraid to use theirs. You know, I could go on and on, and, you know, I welcome any conversations. Anybody's welcome to reach out to me if they want to talk in detail about stories. I could go on about stories for a very long time. But tonight, I just wanted to speak, narrow it down a little bit. First off, I want to thank Mr. Peters for proposing to move affordable housing to be addressed in 2020 instead of 2023. This does tell me that there is acknowledgement for the fact that we do have this need for affordable housing in Eau Claire. It tells me that people are actually listening. But like most everybody else, firsthand, our need is not single-family homes. Yes, it would be wonderful, but that is not our need right now. And that is proven by our lengthy housing lists. Yes, there are three housing programs here in Eau Claire, City of Eau Claire, County of Eau Claire, and Central Wisconsin Community Action Council. All of them have very long waiting lists with a couple hundred people each on them. That tells you right there, those are actual solid numbers that we don't have housing for. Our, our market cannot support them. I wanted to come tonight to remind everybody about the fact that on average, we have 350 students in our school district experiencing homelessness. I, I'm here as a mom. I have two children in the school district. One just graduated. Not that I'm aging myself. Some of these students, and I've seen them firsthand, and I have spoken with them firsthand, are living in our motels. These are the motels that most of us try to forget are there. This means we have kindergarteners in our community, little five- and six-year-olds, or younger, actually, but this is just the school district numbers. They're not playing in their yards or on their swing sets, like my kids and like all of your kids. They all have yards and places to play. These kids are living in one room with their siblings, if they have any, and their parents, in a motel room. They are sharing a roof with, as we know, with prostitutes and drugs. They're the lucky ones, because their parents can afford that $1,200 a month for a motel room. Is that not sad that I have to say that they're the lucky ones? That $1,200, that means that this family has income. So why aren't they in an apartment? Why aren't they in a rental? Sometimes, is it simple? Believe it or not, sometimes it is as simple as bad credit. Somebody made a really dumb financial decision years ago. Their credit is bad, and they go to EMB Rentals, not just EMB. I can tell you that happens all across our city firsthand. I've seen it. I've done the background checks. I've personally vouched for people and tried to get them into housing. And, and these people have the income sometimes. And sometimes it is just as bad as bad credit and, and low income, and they will not have a place. Obviously, we can talk about trauma and impact on these kids, but, you know, we're not going to get into that right now. These kids living in our motels are a direct result of the fact that we do not have the affordable housing stock to house them. It's as simple as that. I see my time is up, so I guess I'm going to be done. But just, you know, keep in mind that what happens is they get into a motel. They're applying for these apartments. They're doing the applications, sometimes very lengthy. They're being judged on every single thing written in that application. They're paying an application fee, sometimes $50 to $100. And they're doing that repeatedly and being denied over and over again. How do you think that plays on somebody? How do you think that plays on those kids? And I will just kind of leave it at that. I have more, but...
Sure. You're welcome to share those with our council members later if you want to fill out a form in the back, too.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, I mean, everybody has my contact information. I think I've spoken with everybody, too. So, you know, feel free to reach out.
Will do. Thanks for coming up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any questions? Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Stacy Acuna, and I currently reside in Chippewa Falls, but lived most of my time in Eau Claire County. I have a lot to say in a short period of time, so. Housing, to me, should be number one, currently living in a home that is permanently temporary. And what I mean by that is that this home I live in is now zoned commercial property. So the moment that this property sells, I have 30 days to get out, my entire home, my kids, and my boyfriend as well. So there's two adults, two kids. I work two part-time jobs, both providing peer support to people like me who have a mental illness, AODA issues, a criminal background, not the best credit score, but not portable, but with an incredible amount of debt due to various reasons. I also have a business management degree. I'm a great mom. My daughter is a straight A student, and both my kids absolutely love animals. They, however, come from a dysfunctional family, as I did. I didn't want my kids to have to go through the same thing as I did. So in some ways, I did great, and in other ways, I failed. Enough about me, but my point is that no matter how hard I try and pick myself up with every mistake that I have made in, in my home, it's never been good enough. My daughter, mostly, due to the fact with my AODA issues, I, the kids had gone to a foster home. Thankfully, they went to a great foster home. However, it was very challenging for me. Them coming out of there, she would compare me with them all the time. At one point, told me that if I loved her, I would have let her have been adopted. So my daughter just wants to fit in like the rest of the kids. She wants to have a nice place to live. She often asks to, to be involved in sports and go do what other kids do. Unfortunately, I often have to say no to things like that, because I can't afford it. And I just want to give her the opportunity, like most everyone else has, or a lot of other kids have. I think with affordable housing opportunities, you know, things like the kids being able to have funding for that would be a greater possibility. The opportunity to get out of debt would be greater. I would have more strength in believing in myself. I would have more strength in believing in myself. I didn't come out of the womb, you know, signing up for having a criminal record, living in poverty, or anything like down that line. I want my children to grow up with a great childhood memories, to be able to go and enjoy having pets in the home, not worrying about whether mom paid rent, if the car's going to break down, or if we have enough money for gas. Kids should be able to enjoy their childhood and be kids. They should be able to focus in school. On top of affordable housing, for not only families, but those who have mental health issues and other various diagnosis or whatever needs that they have, people are able to focus on recovery, whether it's with their mental illness, could have them breaking down, you know, regaining their strength, and that's what peer support's all about. I have to stay strong for those that are just like me, and I've been through it, so I don't want others to go through it. And if we're able to get affordable housing, I think it would greatly reduce recidivism. We'd, the homeless population would definitely decrease, and, you know, it would be helping the community as a whole. I think a lot of people actually want to get out of poverty. They don't want to be stuck in it, and it's just a matter of how you can get there. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. For coming up, any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Before we start the ticker, I have, have a question. During your budget meetings earlier this year, you had multiple subjects and only one chance to talk. I have two subjects to talk about tonight: affordable housing in the Canary District. How do we process that? Just get in line again, or...
Well, I don't know if there'll be much of a line, but at this point, I'll need to just focus on the, on the CIP and any of the issues.
And that's what I'm trying to understand. Where, where does the Canary District fit in in affordable? Is affordable, is the Canary District and affordable housing both in the CIP?
Yeah, I guess if you were speaking to items that are in the CIP regarding the Canary District over the next five years, you're welcome to speak to both of those at the, at the same time. If it's in regards to the agenda item coming up, then I would recommend that you wait until then.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't understand your process.
Sure.
My name's Lee Hennick. I live at 3150 Runway Avenue. This year, I took a survey of my neighborhood association. I'm the president of Sun Ded Area Neighborhood Association, and I asked every, every renter in my district, I'm not as big as some of the other associations, but I have over 300 residents, 300 homes, and the minimum, minimum raise in the rent was 7%. That was the lowest of everybody. The maximum raise was, went from $800 to $1,200. There was a, there was a fire, they're fixing it up, and they, this lady was living there for 24 years, and they boosted her rent over $400. People are losing their homes because they can't afford the rent, and that puts them on the street or in bad situations. If we don't show up for these people today, if we fail them, then they're going to show up for us tomorrow in crime and drugs and everything else. I thought I heard you're, you're spending $400,000, I, I obviously didn't hear it right, on a new dive board for the, for the swim park? If I heard that accurately, and we're spending $200,000 on affordable housing, there's kind of a serious disconnect there. Again, if we don't show up for them today, they're not going to show up for us tomorrow, except in problem areas. And whatever we can do today to make it better, we should reach out and make it better, and not just pretend that we're doing it. You don't pretend to do a police force. You don't pretend to build a home. You don't pretend to put a fire out. You really go after it, and I think that we really should go after it, in, in any way we can, in any form we can. We can afford 30, 40 million for a library, other things, which are good, and I like that, but we have to prioritize something. Now, in the Canary District thing I'll be talking about next, I have an option for you, something that can improve people's lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hennick.
Any questions?
Thanks for coming up.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Kim Kronk, and I live at 1019 Hipsh Boulevard here in Eau Claire. And I'm here to make the desperate plea to increase the funding in our capital improvement plan for affordable and accessible housing in Eau Claire. I appreciate the $200,000 moved into the 2020 budget, but as we can hear the stories and as we know from the statistics, the need well outweighs that $200,000. In my day career, I'm a nurse case manager who works with many people who have limited or fixed incomes and are dealing with disabilities, whether they are physical, developmental, or involving mental health, and I work with people not only in Eau Claire, but around the state. And I think one of the most powerful things I have the privilege of doing, I feel like I'm really tall, one of the things I have the privilege of doing day in and day out is hearing stories, just like we heard tonight. And one of the most disabling factors for people is the lack of affordable housing and the lack of accessibility to affordable housing. While we cannot control some factors in people's lives, what we can control is the creation of affordable and accessible housing in our area. And while we have many entities coming together, we've heard about them tonight, to work on the issue, and, and it's greatly, greatly needed and greatly appreciated, this is an area we have ignored in our budgets for far too long, and the ramifications, as we've heard, extend way beyond the current generation. When I speak of accessibility, let me just clarify that we heard some of that tonight, where even if, even when we create affordable housing, we have people that cannot access affordable housing because of eviction histories, criminal backgrounds, or poor credit. I recently also attended the Home for All Conference in Eau Claire and saw many, several of our local council members, leaders, advocates, and community members present, and while that made me feel more positive about the desperate situation we are in, it still means nothing if we don't act and especially have financial investment. If I had more than three minutes, I could cite many studies that show the health benefits and community safety benefits experienced when people are housed in safe and healthy homes, but I know that you have heard and hopefully studied many of those. These include the increased health and wellness benefits and reduction of chronic diseases of our children and adults. We heard the benefits of kids, you know, when they have safe housing, they're able to grow and thrive. We have a reduction in ACEs. We have the ability to make more money throughout their lifetime, and people have the opportunity to increase personal and wealth over a lifetime. This can include reduced ER visits, hospital admissions, a reduction of crime, and the decreased need for jail bed space. One statistics, I'm sorry, I have this really well written, well typed out, but I had to rewrite it. One statistic that I will share at the conference is when people have safe and affordable housing, rates of anxiety and depression are reduced by 50%. If we think about our county that just built an outpatient mental health facility because of the need for mental health in our community, what could it look like if we had affordable housing on the front end? As a county board supervisor, we are, we're, we just recently completed a, a jail study for a potential plan for a jail remodel or full pot expansion. This is a potential multimillion-dollar expansion with at least 2 million, 2 million annually that would be required to staff if expanded, and I wonder what it would look like if we have continued support, financial support from the city, the county, local hospitals, healthcare facilities, the sheriff's department, the city police department, the county city, the city-county health department, schools, insurance providers, and other partnering agencies to invest in and demand written in our policies for affordable and accessible housing. We had a social worker placed in our jail for reentry, and of all of the self-referrals to that social worker, the biggest need people have is for housing, affordable housing. And so I wonder if that was in place, if our jail admissions or our jail bookings would be reduced, and I greatly believe it would. While we may not be able to agree on how this plan will look, I hope that we can all agree that affordable housing needs to be... Wait for it. Structured in our plans and that we can agree that poverty is not a crime. When we look at investing in features like the water park or the water feature in Wilson Park, I wonder if it would serve us to better to invest in the homeless children in our area or students that are struggling to maintain affordable housing. We have a very creative community focused on the arts, and I think we can come up with a more creative solution for that space. It's, I'm getting close to running out of time, too, but I do want to say, I did appreciate all of the input about the skate park, and I think the more healthy activities we have for children, the better off we are as well. As we look at the parking spending, too, I think we need to be mindful that we can't attract more businesses if folks can't afford to live where they work. We also, if we look at downtown, don't have a 24-hour shelter available to people. One aspect of housing accessibility that we don't talk about, or we talk about much less frequently, are the racist covenants written into the housing deeds in our community. And I believe that council, or I appreciated that council member Worthman posted, posted the original deed to his home that stated it shall not be occupied by a colored person, and that was in 1914. If we pause and think about the systemic racism that was engineered into our community and how that affects the very things that city manager Peters was just talking about as far as the benefits of homeownership, like building equity, financial stability, and accumulation of generational wealth, we can think about how many people have been locked out of that equity-building system, and also for safe and affordable housing, so much so that according to the 2019 Health Rankings Key Findings Report, it is noted that black homeownership rates have hovered at a rate well below that of whites, remaining virtually unchanged since 1968, when the passage of the Fair Housing Act made housing discrimination illegal. So think of the catching up, the rectifying, and the repair we have not only to do morally, but also as a financial obligation to us, to address the harm that we've caused. The good thing is we have an opportunity to begin to change that course and to start to rectify the wrong tonight in this plan and moving forward. The time is now with this council, this year, not next time, some other time, some other year, and that we begin to write and financially back affordable housing into our plan and show that we care about the needs, the health...
Ms. Hennick, if I could have you just wrap up?
For sure. The wellness and stability of everyone in our community. The creation of affordable housing and assuring access to affordable housing is the, is the best way to assure that we are best servicing and meeting the needs of everyone here. Budgets are moral documents, and we have the opportunity to show that now and moving forward, we will be innovative as a city, continue the partnerships, and begin to rectify past wrongs and invest in many generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm kind of short, so it won't be a problem. President Weld and members of the city council, my name is Susan Wolfgram. I live at 550 Graham Avenue, downtown Eau Claire. Full disclosure, I serve on the Plan Commission and I'm co-chair of the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force. This evening, I'm speaking as a private citizen. Before I start, though, I want to say how enthusiastically supportive I am of the skate park. A lot of the skaters here, I think, might not remember 25 years ago, some of the greatest times of my life was taking my son and all his friends with the windows open, singing rap songs, and going to Third Lair in Minneapolis. So now, so now I'll get started about why I'm also here. Budgets and plans communicate our values as a community, but there are times in a community's life cycle when a budget and/or a plan needs to be reimagined. I believe this is one of those times in our Eau Claire community. Historically, the Capital Improvement Plan funds replacement and maintenance of public infrastructure and assets, and this proposed plan includes 72% of its investments in this category. Although a top priority of our city council, only 1.25 million of the 209 million for 2020 to 24 has been targeted towards affordable housing, which is only .006% of the five-year plan. This is in spite of us as a community, knowing that almost half of our neighbors are struggling to pay the rent. We're very familiar now with the Alice Report. And 14.4% of our neighbors in our county are living in poverty, second only to Milwaukee County, according to the Wisconsin 2017 Poverty Report. Yes, $200,000 was moved to 2020, but for affordable single-family homes, not what we've heard, our city's urgent need for affordable rentals for almost half of our residents in our city, living with various levels of housing insecurity and rental barriers. I also appreciate that $200,000 is a start, but this is a very small amount of money. Affordable single-family homes are not the start needed to address housing insecure residents in Eau Claire. We need mixed multifamily rentals now, incentivizing developers to use the WIDA tax credits. If more dollars were allotted for more land to be acquired and then allowing for more units of diverse housing, then yes, mixing affordable single-family homes in with multi- rentals is what is working across this country. The trickle-down philosophy has not worked. Similar to trickle-down economics, this is the argument that opportunity trickles down and people move up from rental to ownership, and this keeps the mobility of renters moving up. This approach assumes economic mobility. What we have is wage stagnation, severe economic disparity, and the urgency of now. I am one advocate voice representing the 46% of our housing insecure and 14.4% living in poverty, including but not limited to low-income families and individuals with other rental barriers, our seniors, our disabled adults, our veterans, our low-wage employees, and many young professionals, as well as many living that we've heard from tonight in substandard housing and on long housing waiting lists for over a year. Affordable rentals are the urgency of now. I urge you to amend the proposed project for the $200,000 to be used for diverse multifamily affordable rentals. This amendment would be in accordance with the recently adopted Chippewa Valley Housing Task Force Summary Recommendations. Page five, under Development Regulations, which addresses revising zoning requirements to allow greater density in appropriate areas, and page seven, under Public Funding, which recommends focusing limited public resources on those persons not well-served by the private housing market. I thank you.
Councilmember Manuel has a question for you. If you could pause for one moment.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you, council president. Thank you, Dr. Wolfgram. I know that you share that you're here in your citizen hat, and I'm wondering if I may ask you a question about your role in the Plan Commission, because I know that the Plan Commission amended, made, made a motion to amend the budget. May I ask you a question about that?
So, I'm so new to the Plan Commission that I'm not sure if that's appropriate or not, so I guess at this point, I would decline, just because I haven't cleared that and I want to make sure that I'm following protocol.
You're certainly welcome. It was public record, the, the discussion and the vote, so you're welcome.
Okay.
I would totally respect your boundary, so if you don't want to answer...
No, as long as President Weld gives me the clearance. It's all, it's all public, public record, so I'm okay.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, thanks for your sensitivity.
Right, so I...
And I, I would just say that I wouldn't ask you to speak, certainly would not ask you to speak on behalf of the Plan Commission. I think that would be inappropriate. I do note that in council's packet, we received a draft of the minutes, that you moved a motion to recommend that investments in affordable housing would be amended to begin in 2020.
Yes.
I'm wondering if you can speak solely as the mover of what are you hoping to see with that?
Well, I think exactly what I've just stated. I didn't want to get any more specific than that, because I really do believe stakeholders need to be consulted, which I don't recall stakeholders being consulted in terms of how this $200,000 was going to be used. But all I knew was that whatever we needed to do in the urgency of now to get that money fast-tracked to 2020, we needed to do, and there's many of us that are very willing to engage in those conversations and have ideas, and that's for a different time. to engage in those conversations and have ideas, and that's for a different time, but we have many, many stakeholders here that are willing to offer you ideas. But for me, it's absolutely multifamily affordable rentals for half of our residents.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Yeah, it helps me out a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfgram.
Awesome, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
Good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to be speaking in front of you today, and I appreciate you, all of you, for pretty much everything that you do. I've been to two of Eau Claire's city council meetings so far, and at two of those meetings, I have cried. And more than just a little, on the note of the housing agenda, which I've also spoken to many of you regarding, because not only is it an issue of extreme importance and necessity, but I also can relate personally.
Can I interrupt you for one, and just your name and your address?
Excuse me. I appreciate your patience with that. My name is Kelsey Flack. I reside at 221 North Dewey Street here in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I love this town and the community, as I stated at the last meeting here, and respectfully, and in a laid-back fashion, I will be at these meetings every Monday until we find means to bring more willed recreation around Eau Claire in a legal manner that is amicable for everybody involved. I state the willed community, which is something that I got a giggle about earlier and I'm probably going to get tons of grief about later, because it's not just skateboarding. That's extremely important, and I'm here to also talk about the Boyd Skate Park, just to give you a little highlight of why I'm exactly here. But the willed community is important because I, like everybody else, have noticed the plaques that have been put on the sidewalks and the signs that have been put all over the place, because we don't want pedestrians getting run over by the willed community, and I don't want to be getting run over, you know, run over by anybody on a board or a bicycle or rollerblades or anything. I completely understand the conundrum here. But we have to address the fact that pretty much every single person that we know these days has a fitness tracker on their wrist. This is recreation for a lot of people. The skating community in this area consists of thousands of people, and I understand that I'm just, I'm just new to this spread. I'm standing up here at the podium for the second time in front of you to talk about this issue, which means that I'm pretty fresh. So I'd like to get to know the community as well, just to let you all know that I have a huge interest in that, so we can talk further about what this community exists, consists of. Just from my own experience, it varies from children to adults, families, tourists. If we had an excellent skate park here, I promise you, like Phelan Skate Park in Menominee, which has attracted TV and media crews to rock stars that go to Rockfest, I mean, these places are incredible, and they definitely should be sponsored, in my opinion. Being somebody that grew up with a housing situation on my hands myself with my family, which is something I certainly don't victimize myself to, and I actually think that's quite a privilege as well. I had to find an outlet for myself to, to enjoy, and for me, that was skating, so I can definitely relate to this cause. I've been skating for nine years, as I stated in the last meeting that I was here during. It's an extremely enjoyable activity. It gives me incredible physical fitness. I went from being in a, in a, I went from being in poverty with my family to being an accountant, who is not in a housing situation. It feels awesome, and looking back on that, it's not something that I look back on and get sad about. It's something that made me an incredible person. I built character, and I'm proud of that, and it, it helps me see people. And I think that that's something that we also need to consider, is that a lot of people in the skating community also need an outlet. I mean, a lot of people in the housing situations as well, back and forth. Everybody wants this, and I can't wait to show that to you over time, moving forward. But I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to us all in the meantime. We're working really hard, and I specifically want to talk about the Boyd Skate Park with you, because as you're all aware, these guys have already been fundraising for this. There's funds gathered. They just want to see them matched, and we can talk more about that and get to know what exactly that's going to cost and how realistic that's going to be, because obviously we don't want very, very, very important funds being spent in places where they're not going to be worthwhile, and I understand that too. So hopefully, we can all just create an environment, like I stated last time, where we can all feel free to speak in front of each other and make a place that we all can feel comfortable and appreciated and valued. Again, I really appreciate your time. My name is Kelsey Flack. These meetings are super difficult every once in a while. I hope just every once in a while, but I really appreciate everything you do, so thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, Ms. Flack. Any questions? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Ms. Flack, for all of your work and also for coming down two meetings in a row to speak to city council. One of the questions I have for you is, you know, tomorrow, this amendment that myself and councilmember Beaton are proposing is for $20,000. Is there a possibility or hope, do you think, that that money potentially could be matched to some, with some other organization or nonprofit that's in our community? Because I think, you know, that's one of the things that is a hope, is that maybe there's other entities in our community that could bring a match just to that funding.
And in my opinion, what better community than the running community, right? Because who doesn't love to run and skate? I do. So actually, I've considered this myself. Runners go long distances. I'm a longboarder. I don't skate. That's far cooler than I could ever be. And maybe someday, if we had an awesome skate park, so these guys could actually take me out and teach me how to do it. I think that it's definitely, it's going to take some community, but that's really what Eau Claire is all about, community. And that's what I've learned as I've gotten older, is that it just takes communication. And when you enjoy the people around you, when you enjoy your community, it becomes pretty awesome to communicate with them. And he's not here, so I don't want to speak his name, I suppose, but one of the gentlemen that was here earlier affiliated with Passion Board Shop, of course, has mentioned to me that there is an event that we are trying to make an annual thing. We have ideas in place, but I don't want to speak about things that aren't necessarily on paper yet.
Sure.
But absolutely. And it sounds like we just need the hands on board, and we have them, so-
Thank you.
If you can stay tuned, I would love to talk to you about that further in coming meetings.
Any other questions for Ms. Flack? Thanks for coming up.
Thanks for everything, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Can I ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close item number two and move on to item number three in our agenda under the public discussion of the Project Plan Creating and Designating Boundaries for Tax Incremental Financing District Number 13, the Cannery District. Mr. Windsor.
Before I jump into the formal presentation, at, at each of the council seats, there should have been a copy of the Tax Incremental Finance District Number 13 Project Plan. There were a couple of amendments that, or changes that have been made to this plan, and I don't think they were reflected in the version that was in the agenda packet, so, and I'll put those up on the screen. So these were changes that were suggested by the Plan Commission during, during their review. The first of those is on page three and is underlined and shown in red, and that is the addition of language. This section starts with TID Number 13 will advance the City of Eau Claire's redevelopment objectives, and specifically will, and then E was added, emphasize the creation and/or rehabilitation of affordable housing. And then on page seven, there was language also added under Park Improvements. There was a listing of features that might be included in the park, and Skate Plaza was added to that. And then in number five, demolition and rehabilitation, it indicates that it may be desirable to use funding from TID Number 13 to rehabilitate existing housing where preservation is practical or demolish these substandard, substandard structures when preservation is not structurally or economically practical. So those were additions that were suggested by the Plan Commission and have been incorporated into the project plan. So we are here to talk about Tax Incremental District Number 13, which is in the Cannery Redevelopment Area. I'm going to also go through some background, since this is the first tax incremental district that this city council will have created. The creation of a tax incremental district, or TID, in tax incremental financing, or TIF, is one way to pay for public improvements. It allows all of the overlying taxing jurisdictions, the county, the city, the schools, the technical college, to share in the cost of the improvements from which all of those taxing jurisdictions benefit. In its simple terms, when you create a tax incremental district, it establishes a base, a base value for the district. The city, the county, schools, the technical college, all continue to receive their portion of the property taxes on that base value. As time goes by and the property value increases, you create what's called value increment. That value increment all goes to the city to pay for the project costs. When the tax incremental district is terminated, it goes back to really the way that it was, where the county, the schools, the technical college, and the city now all take their piece of what is now an increase in the total value from when the district was created. What can TIF be used for? Can be used for public works and improvements, financing costs, real property, assembly costs, land write-down, professional service costs, administrative organizational costs, relocation costs, cash grants, and if there's a developer agreement in place. Environmental remediation can be used to pay for projects within a half-mile of the district, and all costs must relate directly to the purpose of the TID. What can't TIF be used for? Constructing or expanding administrative buildings, police and fire buildings, libraries, community and recreational buildings, school buildings, and can't be used for general government operating expenses. One of the key underpinnings of tax increment financing is what's referred to as the "but-for" test. But for or without the use of TIF, the proposed development would not occur as proposed within the same time period, with the same level of value, property value, jobs, or amenities. So in the resolution that city, the city council will be considering tomorrow at your legislative meeting, there are five different findings contained within that resolution that the city, that the city council really adopts when you hopefully approve the resolution. The first of those is that the area proposed for inclusion in TID Number 13 is suitable for mixed-use development. Second, that the improvement of such area is likely to enhance significantly the value of substantially all of the other real property in the district. Three, the project costs serve to promote mixed-use development consistent with the purpose for which the tax incremental district is created. Such project costs are necessary and convenient to the implementation of the project plan. Four, the equalized value of the taxable property within the district plus the increment of all existing districts within the city does not exceed 12% of the total equalized value of taxable property within the city and the equalized value of taxable property within the district. And finally, that the proposed creation of TID Number 13 meets the basic requirements for tax incremental proposals, is feasible, is in general conformity with the Eau Claire Comprehensive Plan, is consistent with the degree of economic development necessary for the city's current and anticipated population by increasing the diversifying local job base. So those are the five findings that we're going to ask you to make tomorrow at your legislative session when you consider the resolution. So I'm going to go a little bit of background about TID Number 13, and then I'll go over each one of those findings in a little bit more detail. The Cannery Redevelopment District was created in May of 2008. The Redevelopment Authority has spent approximately $6 million acquiring and raising properties within the Cannery Redevelopment Area. The RDA and the city now own all the properties except for one property within the redevelopment area. TID Number 13 is proposed as a mixed-use TID and has a mixed-use TID, has a maximum life of 20 years. The proposed boundary of this district start down on Madison Street, does not include the, what is now the Dollar General and Little Caesar's and Quick Trip, but includes land along the river owned by the city and extends up to the High Bridge from the river over to First Street and also over to Second, taking in city-owned, city-owned parks. So this is the area that is proposed for TID 13. This map shows the half-mile expenditure boundary. That half-mile expenditure boundary gets over into the North Riverfront's neighborhood, south into the historic Randall Park neighborhood, and certainly into the, into the Upper West Side neighborhood. Existing zoning within this district is primarily industrial, so the light blue on the map is the industrial zone. This is the, the Children's Theater at that location, but pretty much all of the property within the district is characterized by industrial zoning. Proposed improvements within this district, we're proposing, the, the red lines here are all the streets that are planned to be reconstruct, reconstructed. We're proposing intersection improvements at these locations, trail overlooks at these locations. As you're, you're probably aware, the bike trail has already been connected, or constructed, excuse me, and now connects really Madison Street up to the, up to the High Bridge. The purple areas on this map are the redevelopment sites. This site that I'm pointing at here, immediately north of Quick Trip, will be discussed tomorrow evening in a development, proposed development agreement for a multifamily development at that particular location. The, the Brewing Project owns the land along the river at this location. Again, this is the Children's Theater, and then various development sites to the north of that. Planned along the riverfront is a linear park, and then a much larger neighborhood park at the northern end of the, of the site. So the total cost of improvements included within this project plan, a total $13.625 million, include street reconstruction, paving, underground utilities, lighting, landscaping, property acquisition, potentially property acquisition and relocation totaling about $5 million. Park development at $3.8 million, and cash grants to developers estimated at $4.8 So going through the council's findings, first of those is that TIF Number 13 is suitable for mixed-use development. If we take a look at what current development is within this district and what development has been proposed and contemplated, we have a Children's, Children's Theater, the Brewing Project, so a brewer who also has a tasting room and is anticipating a restaurant at that location as well. We have a proposed residential development to the south end of, of the project, or, excuse me, the district. And then if we look at the Comprehensive Plan, the Comprehensive Plan anticipates mixed-use development within this particular area, and also its proximity to Mayo Hospital creates a number of opportunities for mixed-use development, serving both the employees at Mayo Hospital as well as visitors to the hospital. The second finding that we'll ask the city council to make is that the improvement of such area is likely to enhance significantly the value of substantially all the other real property in the district. This project plan anticipates total project costs of $8.8 million. This, the project plan anticipates the projected value increment when this district is terminated at $61 million. So the investment of that $8.8 million in project costs is anticipated to cause the property value within the district to increase to $61 million. property value within the district to increase to $61 million. Third finding, the project costs serve to promote mixed-use development. Such project costs are necessary to the implementation of the project plan. Currently, the streets in this particular area are in need of significant repairs. That's certainly a detractor to further investment within this area. Street lighting needs to be upgraded, creating a safe pedestrian-oriented environment. The park improvements along the river, as we've seen in the Phoenix Park area, create an environment that businesses and/or residential developers want to locate, and they create that environment where that's where people want to be. And like I said, we need to look no further than the other side of the Chippewa River in the North Barstow area to see the effect that creating a large attractive park along the river can do to an area and serve to increase the development opportunities within that area. The third finding, the equalized value of the taxable property within the district does not exceed 12% of the total equalized value of the city. So the total equalized value of the city of Eau Claire on January 1st of 2018 was about $5.45 billion. The equalized value of all taxable property in TID Number Thirteen as of January 1, 2018, was about $1.5 million. The equalized value increment of all the other TIFs within the city of Eau Claire as of January 1, 2018, was about $207 million. So the percentage of TIF valuation to the total city property valuation is about 3.82%. So our limit is 12%. We're sitting at about 3.82% within tax incremental districts. So that finding has been met. The fourth finding, basically that the proposed creation of TID Number Thirteen is feasible. First of all, the project plan was reviewed by the Plan Commission, and one of their findings was that the project plan is feasible. The total cost, including debt issuance and the interest on the long-term debt and inter-fund borrowing costs, is approximately $20,448,000. The projected tax increments from the new development within this district total about This district breaks even in year 20 of its maximum life of 20 years, and has a positive balance of approximately $524,000 at closure. So this creation of this district is financially feasible. The proposed creation of TID Number Thirteen is in general conformity with the Comprehensive Plan. First of all, the Plan Commission found that the creation of TID Number Thirteen was in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. More specifically, if you take a look at Chapter Two of the Comprehensive Plan, objectives one, six, and nine, each of these speak to the redevelopment of the Cannery Redevelopment area, or I believe in the Comprehensive Plan it was still referred to as the West Bank Redevelopment Area. Also, Chapter Five, objectives one and two, talk about parks, greenways, and trail system, and talk about the appropriateness of the redevelopment of this particular area. And Chapter Seven, objectives five and six, talk about redevelopment in downtown and riverfront revitalization, and again, talk about the desirability of redeveloping this area with a linear park along the river and mixed-use developments within the district. Chapter Twelve, of the Comprehensive Plan, the Downtown Plan, objectives three, four, and five, and nine, all talk about different aspects related to the Cannery area and, again, why it's desirable to redevelop this particular area. And then other pertinent plans, and links were included in the agenda materials distributed to the City Council, the Cannery District Redevelopment Plan, that is a plan that was approved by the Redevelopment Authority, the Cannery District Health Impact Assessment, and the West Riverside District Plan. These are all other planning documents that talk about the West Bank or the Cannery Redevelopment area and the desirability of promoting mixed-use development within that district. TID Number Thirteen, talking about the "but-for" test, quote from the esteemed Mike Schatz, now-retired Economic Development Director for the city of Eau Claire, he said, "You're challenged, of course, when repurposing such an area because you have to deal with contamination of old buildings. Our forefathers did some things they shouldn't have done environmentally-wise. We deal with it all the time. As Americans, we get smarter all the time and learn more. We hope to generate more activity in this area by making it a healthier environment." So one of those obstacles to development of this area are environmental conditions within the district. If we take a look at historical investment within the Cannery Redevelopment area, building permit valuation between 1991 and May of 2019, within the proposed TID, there was approximately $5.18 million invested in terms of the valuation that was reported on building permits. And this included $4.25 million for the Brewing Project. Now, I do want to point out that the MOU that we have, or the Development Agreement, excuse me, that we have with the Brewing Project anticipates the creation of a TID. In fact, there are elements of the Development Agreement that we have on that project that don't go into effect until a Tax Incremental District is created. So even though the Brewing Project is already there, it was contemplated that a TID would be created when that Development Agreement was drafted, and there are conditions in that agreement that don't take effect until the TID is created. Also, immediately adjacent to this TID, Quick Trip and Family Video, there's been a total of $1.67 million in building permits. Now, if we compare this to two other active TIDs within the downtown area, we see that TID Number Eight, between 2002 and 2018, came a much shorter timeframe than 1991 to May of 2019, there was $67 million in new valuation created within that district. TID Number Ten, again, a much shorter timeframe, this is only over the course of three years, there was $61 million in new increment created within that district. So again, if we look at why this investment, or why the creation of a Tax Incremental District is necessary in TID Number Thirteen, we can see that it's necessary because there's been a lack of historical investment within that district, particularly compared to other redevelopment areas within immediate proximity in the downtown. Also, as I just indicated, the Brewing Project Development Agreement contains conditions in it which don't go into effect unless a TID is created. It contains a TID-conditioned precedent for value and tax guarantees within that agreement. In addition, the Cannery Trail Residences, which you'll be considering at your legislative session tomorrow afternoon, in the whereas clauses, the developer acknowledges that without TIF cash grant, the project would not occur. So this is the developer saying, if these incentives are not available to me, I can't go forward with this project. So in terms of next steps, tomorrow, the City Council, or, excuse me, this evening is the City Council Public Discussion. Tomorrow at your legislative session, we'll be asking the City Council to take action on a resolution creating the district. And then the final step in the creation will occur on August 1st, when the Joint Review Board will review and hopefully approve the creation of this district as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Worthman.
Council President, thank you, Mr. Winsens, all your work on this and lengthy presentation. One of the things I wanted to ask is, I know in TID Twelve, we have the inclusion of housing revitalization funds. Is that a component of this TID?
No, it is not. There's simply not enough value increment within the project plan. As you can see, it breaks even in year 20 of 20. So there simply isn't, are not any funds available to do that. If development occurs faster than we anticipate, or at a value greater than we anticipate, the project plan could be amended at a later date to include something along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Winsens. I have a question for you about the project plan. Also on page seven, I noticed that under park improvements, there's a little bit more delineation around the "but are not limited to" and inclusion of Skate Plaza. Is there a benefit of calling out anything additional? I'm thinking in particular feedback that I heard when I was at the meeting at the Brewing Project with the folks who are working on the RDA kind of District Improvement Plan. Some stakeholders in the community who represent the Curling Club came out and spoke and identified their interest in perhaps moving to this area. Is there a benefit perhaps for writing grants or anything along those lines to have that specifically in the project plan? Doesn't, of course, doesn't restrict that to not happen, but maybe there's a benefit, and I'm wondering if you can speak to that.
Yeah, sure. Good question. No, the Curling Club, the development proposed by the Curling Club would not be considered a park improvement. That would be a private curling facility and would actually occur on one of the development sites within the district as opposed to within the park area. But certainly, and that's why I included the language "but are not limited to," there's really no benefit to listing individual improvements. In fact, you know, I'm not even sure that, in hindsight, that I would have listed the improvements, but just indicated that, you know, a park to be developed at a future date. But the Curling Club would be a private enterprise.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Just to double check, I know this has been a couple of years probably, but there already is a plan for the park area that's described here, correct?
The plan that was developed by the RDA included, I guess, a concept plan, if you will, for the park area. Since that plan was developed, and in fact, it in a way gets to the question, the first question that you asked, the RDA is taking another look at the park area and has hired a consultant to do that, and that's what Councilmember Emanuel was referencing. And one of the thoughts was, you know, do we want to reduce the amount of park area and create additional development sites so that the district cash flow is a little bit better? And there may be opportunities, like you're talking about, to create a rehabilitation fund or something along those lines. So that process is still ongoing. So there is not an adopted plan for the park at this point in time. Just one other thing on your first question, Councilmember Worthman, is even though there's not funding specifically in the plan at this point in time, there still is that provision in state law that allows a Tax Incremental District to stay open for an extra year beyond the end of its normal life for affordable housing. So that is still available, even though there isn't like a rehab fund being set up within this plan.
Thanks.
Any other questions in council? Councilmember Christopherson.
Well, you've just spurred an inquiry for me. Have we, do we have any TIDs that are ready to close that would provide affordable housing?
Not in the next couple of years, and not with any significant increment. TID Number Seven, I believe, will close within the next five years, but there isn't any significant increment there, unfortunately.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for explaining that to me earlier. Sometimes the process has confused me here.
Don't worry.
Name's Lee Hennig, 3150 Runway Avenue. And I have some concerns with the building of the apartment complexes. As I understand it, we're giving almost $900,000 to the developer to develop two phases of buildings. The first building will be totally commercial and no affordable housing in it. He promises, the developer promises, to put the affordable housing in the second phase, and that will only depend on the WIDE Act tax rebates. If they don't get them, if they fail to get those rebates, the affordable housing does not go into the second phase, but yet they still keep the $900,000. And that really concerns me, or half of the $900,000, excuse me. Why are we paying for something we're not getting anything for? And that's my concern. And if we do pony up $900,000 and they don't put any affordable housing in the second phase because they can't get the tax credits and they get the $450,000 as a gimme, what happens to the other $450,000? Can we direct that to affordable housing? The last time, WIDE Act, last year when WIDE Act tax credits were applied for, there was approximately 120 or more people who applied for, and 40 got, 40 received the tax credits. So there's a very real possibility that the second phase will not happen, and the tax credits will not be awarded to the developer, and he'll still get half of the $900,000. So that is my concern, and I'd like the council to really think about that. And it doesn't seem fair to me that we're giving something for nothing. So that was my concerns, and that's what I'd like to people to consider. I've sent everyone some information. The second aspect falls into the $900,000. Mr. Peters, you also have a copy that you already mailed. There's a training program that trains people in five to six weeks, workforce resource pays for their tuition, and they're graduating at $17 to $19 an hour. It's all state-of-the-art, cutting-edge, state-of-the-art simulators, and $900,000 more than pays for the initial startup. They graduate a minimum of 120 people a year, 120 people a year at $17 to $19 an hour for an investment of about $850,000. That's 120 people getting $17 to $19 an hour every year, and that's with five simulators. More simulators, more people graduate. Workforce resource, the state of Wisconsin's ponying up to training funds, and this is a kind of investment that affects affordable housing. This kind of money changes people's lives. They can afford to go out and pay the $1,000 a month rent when they get $19, $20 an hour jobs. Our Quick Trip people make $12 an hour. They're never going to afford, without working three or four jobs, $1,000 a month rent. And if we don't start thinking out of the box a little bit and encouraging not only development of affordable housing, but development of affordable jobs, that we can get people off their feet and back on as productive society members, and the neat thing about this is the last 12 people that graduated, half of them had histories, and they got jobs, good union jobs. So I just would like to start a talking point about that. You have some basic information, and thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hennig. Good evening.
Good evening. Once again, Lauren Devine, 2214 Peters Drive. I'm originally from Greenville, South Carolina, a city a bit bigger than Eau Claire, but Eau Claire looks to me a lot like my hometown did. And it's developing in a similar way, and that is in many ways a good thing. When I was a kid, about my son's age, so, you know, mid-'80s, there were two reasons to go downtown Greenville. You either A worked in one of the high-rise office buildings there, or you were going there to buy drugs. Like, it was rundown. The city did a lot of... The city did a lot of investing and developing, very much like Eau Claire is doing with like the Confluence Project and stuff. And that's been definitely a boon for the business and economics and enjoyability of the area. Now, the downtown area is the place to be. I mean, they have nice restaurants and shops, and there's like Brooks Brothers and all this kind of stuff down there, which, one of the critiques of the area was, you know, gentrification, which gentrification is only bad if it becomes a pay-to-play system and it only benefits the people who already have means. You know, if development happens that allows all members of the community to benefit, you know, that's less of a problem if you've cleaned things up and made things nice and boosted the property values of the area. That only becomes a problem if you shut people out. So one of the critiques was, other than the, they did fix up the park very nice, but other than like walking around the trails around the park, which is a very nice place to be and hang out, most of the development benefited people that have disposable income to go buy ice cream and nice coffee shops and restaurants. Wonderful area. They also built this amazing skate plaza in downtown Greenville. The only problem is all the best skate features have no skateboarding signs on them. Obviously, they weren't intended to be skate features, but considering the city didn't invest in a skate park, guess what happened? All those cool little benches and fountains and stuff like that. They're constantly having to run people out because there wasn't any plan for affordable recreation. I've already spoken to you, you know, twice about, you know, you know my feelings about skate parks. I just want to encourage you, I definitely love what you're doing and going forward. This definitely, that definitely seems an area that needs development. I just want to encourage you as you're developing these plans going forward. When I first saw the plan for this cannery district, it looked like, oh, cool, there's, it looks like an awesome skate park is being designed, but then I've heard that might be being actually taken out of the plan. So I just want to encourage you as you're working on developing this area, as I feel you should, to not forget about affordable housing and affordable recreation, so all members of the community can benefit from this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Devine.
Hello again. My name's Gabe Bromit, 1907 Badger Avenue. I want to second everything Lauren just said about this new development. I think it's great that Eau Claire is developing in the ways that it is, but there, I think we need more emphasis on, I mean, affordability, obviously, housing, but then in recreation as well. And I've been up here and I talked about skate parks before, but they, I'm, they're just great spaces. I guess, when I first heard about this cannery district, I heard about it from Phil Feber because we were talking about this, the, getting the Boyd Park fundraising going, and he had said that, you know, when we get this... Oh, geez, I can't, I go blank when I get up. Basically, the idea was, we would fundraise for Boyd Park, get about $40,000, and that would show that there was an initiative from this community, and then when it came around to building another park in the cannery district, it wouldn't be a question. His vision, which I support and I back it up, was to have multiple smaller skate parks throughout the community along the bike trail. And I think that's a really unique idea, and it would set Eau Claire apart because most, most cities just build one big park and then a bunch, maybe like one or two little ones on the outskirts somewhere. But the great thing about, that's going to be great about having Lakeshore Park and Boyd Park, and what was nice about the idea of having the skate park in the cannery area was that all of these places would be accessible by the bike trail, that'd be on the bus route. They're accessible to anybody of any income. That was, you know, that was a big part of why the YMCA park shut down was because not every kid can afford to go all the way out there and pay money to skate every time. So when you have these public places, it just, it's just better for the whole community. So I, I would like, I would like to not see the recreation part of this project cut. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else that wishes to speak?
Judy Mosley again. I am an enthusiastic supporter of the proposal for tax incremental district number 13, also known as the Cannery Redevelopment District. I have to admit that as an ordinary kind of citizen, I find it hard to wrap my head around TIDS and TIFs. So when that came up first, as we were talking about affordable development in this neighborhood, I had to go do some research and crack the books open. So I don't think I'll ever be able to explain a TID to a third grader, but I do feel confident in what I have learned, that this is a good idea for this community at this time in this neighborhood. I raised my kids on the west side of Eau Claire, and so I'm very, very familiar with this neighborhood, and over the decades, I have watched its slow, sad decline from a rather active and vibrant business district to what is now, I mean, you can only describe it as a blighted area now. So I do think that it's important that we do something to revitalize this neighborhood and bring development and bring activity back to this neighborhood. In order for developers, though, to be able to build 130-unit apartment building, or for a medical clinic to be able to build a clinic, or for stores and shops to go in on the riverfront, we have to provide some assistance because it's just simply too expensive for a developer to do it on their own. So I, I think that tax incremental financing is the way that we do that. It's the tool that we use to make that happen, and I urge you to approve this tax incremental district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Ms. Wolfgram.
President Weld and members of the city council, I'm still Susan Wolfgram. Just briefly, I enthusiastically support TID number 13 project plan with the affordable housing inclusions. Redevelopment needs to be intentional to not displace residents. This project plan with these inclusions, from my perspective, is now a neighborhood revitalization plan, not gentrification, and there is a big difference. Gentrification focuses on increased property valuation and business growth without intentional plans to sustain affordable housing in the area, leading to the displacement of residents. Neighborhood revitalization focuses on the preservation of the neighborhood and neighborhood culture, as well as diversification of incomes without displacement, a both-and, growth with affordability. One example of neighborhood culture would be to incorporate the skate plaza into the plan. Why we need to care about displacement, for instance, is that the Health Impact Assessment found that the number of renters in the West Riverside neighborhood that are cost-burdened, paying 30% or more of their income on housing costs, is nearly double that of the city of Eau Claire as a whole, with over 90% falling into this category of housing insecure. Similarly, the neighborhood has a much higher concentration of residents experiencing low income compared to the rest of our city. Nearly 70% have annual incomes of less than $25,000. We have an obligation to the residents in our community to be strategic, intentional, and explicit about affordable housing to prevent displacement. Thank you. I walk away too quickly, sorry.
Could you cite where those numbers came from regarding North Riverfronts?
From the TID project plan and the Health Impact Assessment. Yes, I believe it's page three.
Thanks.
First paragraph, I think.
Author skim it again. So anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public discussion and move on to our public comment period. For those of you that wish to speak, seeing have not signed up yet, there is a list, a sign-up sheet on the back, 40 in there. We'll wait a moment for Ms. Merle to see if there's anyone else still here who wishes to speak. Neil Miller. Chris Johnson. Thomas Kim. Cheryl Venkston. Mary Stanky. Diane... Say Diane. Sean Putner. Anyone else here that was to speak in regards to the public commentary period? Then close the public portion of this meeting. And thank you for those who joined us. Motion by Councilmember Law, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson. The city council may now go into closed session to discuss and seek direction regarding the deposition of the Sulein Steen Locamo of 2718, which is permitted in closed session pursuant to section 19.85 of Wisconsin statutes, and then also seek direction to discuss bargaining parameters for upcoming negotiations with city fire, police, and transit employee groups and strategy to be employed in upcoming labor negotiations with the law by Wisconsin statutes 19.85. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, court please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson. Beaton. Benjamin. Bergy. Christopherson. Emanuel. Gregert. Clinkhammer. Lor. Well. Worthman.
We are now in closed session.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Council media works come to order. Please rise for the presidential leaders. Presidential leaders.
Statue of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson, here. Beaton, here. Benjamin, here. Bergy, here. Christopherson, here. Emanuel, here. Gregert. Clinkhammer. Lor. Well. Worthman.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for joining us, and thank you to those that were here with us late last night as well. Welcome you to our Tuesday, July 23 legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, council deliberates and takes actions on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting. Thank you to the residents that joined us again last night for your comments and thoughts during our public hearings, and for those that reached out to us today via email and such. Thank you to Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding to those of you not able to join us in person and to watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit channel 994 Inspection Cable, which is also available at 101.9 FM. You can find past meetings on YouTube under Triple Valley Media Works channel. We have a full agenda, so we'll get started. The first item of the business is the consent agenda. For those of you that are here in regards to an item that may be on the consent agenda, just be aware, we will just have one vote unless it's pulled off, and if that consent agenda is passed, anything listed or included in that consent agenda will be considered approved. So do council members have any questions in regards to this consent agenda? Are there any items that you'd like to see removed? Seeing none, court please call the roll. I'm sorry. On a motion by Councilmember Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, are decided this up for discussion? Any discussion or any questions or any items you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, court please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson. Beaton. Benjamin. Bergy. Christopherson. Emanuel. Gregert. Lor. Well. Worthman.
And the consent agenda has passed. We have one proclamation this afternoon, recognizing National Night Out against Crime. If I could have Ms. Coit and Ms. Comte join me up at the podium, we can appreciate it. So in recognition of National Night Out, we have prepared this proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a nationwide crime and drug prevention program called National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime. And whereas, the National Night Out event provides a unique opportunity for the city of Eau Claire to promote cooperative police-community crime prevention and healthy community efforts during its 25th Night Out on Crime event on Tuesday, August 6th at Owen Park. And National Night Out is designed to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, generate support for and participation in local anti-crime efforts, to strengthen neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships, and send a message to criminals to let them know that neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. And it is essential that all citizens of Eau Claire be aware of the importance of cooperation and crime prevention programs for neighborhood safety and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Eau Claire. And whereas, the Eau Claire Police Department, Eau Claire Parks and Recreation Department, Metropolis Resort, the Eau Claire Children's Museum, the Eau Claire YMCA, the Downtown Eau Claire Inc., and Eau Claire Neighborhoods play a vital role in supporting healthy and safe community through joint crime and drug prevention efforts, along with participation in healthy activities and wellness programs. Now, therefore, I, Terry Well, President of the Eau Claire City Council, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, as National Night Out Against Crime in the city of Eau Claire, and do hereby call upon all citizens of Eau Claire to join the sponsors on August 6th at the 25th Annual Kickoff Event from 5:30 to 8 o'clock at Owen Park in support of Night Out on Crime. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the support for this program for the last 25 years. We're very excited for it to be the 25th anniversary in town. There's a lot of history and planning that has gone with it, and most importantly, I think, the collaboration between Parks and Rec and the other city entities that goes into all the planning. that goes into all the planning and hosting of this event for our community, offering that community partnership, letting the community see the collaboration that the entire city has, and providing a forum and platform for neighborhoods and individuals to come out and speak with their officers and talk about any concerns that they have, and for children to also meet their officers and make a good impression. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we did put an invitation in front of you at your desks. So we'd like you to come out and join us that evening. It's always nice to see some familiar faces out there. Hopefully, we get a night, nice night like today. We get about fifteen hundred counted people, families, kids, that come out and play games, that go through some of our city vehicles, our emergency vehicles. So it's really, really a cool event. I have not been part of it for all twenty-five years, but I was here on year three. So I've been around a little bit, but it's a really cool event, and we'd like to see you guys come out and join us if you can. Thank you.
So we will move into our business agenda, beginning with item number twenty-one. A resolution accepting and appropriating a land and water conservation fund grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the Ferry Street Dog Park Development. Does this item amend the budget to third vote of the elected members for eight affirmative votes is required for adoption?
Thank you, Council President Weld. And council members, the resolution before you authorizes the city to execute a grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for the Southwest Dog Park and Boat Launch Project. In particular, this pertains to the dog park portion of that overall project. In addition to accepting the grant and authorizing the execution of the agreement, staff do seek an appropriation of one hundred and fifty-three thousand sixty-eight dollars. This is presented in Table two of the memo attached as part of your packet. The city portion of the appropriation is ten thousand and thirty-four dollars. The rest is the DNR grant portion. As part of the two thousand nineteen capital improvement plan, the council already appropriated one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for this project, and under this grant program, we are able to utilize previously appropriated money as part of our match portion. Not every grant program lets you do that, this one does. So we are only requesting a city appropriation then of the ten thousand thirty-four dollars. I would be glad to take any questions. Thank you, thanks.
And a motion by Councilmember Lor and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson. This item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And that item passes. Agenda item number twenty-two, a resolution approving naming the Forest Street Special Area to Veterans Tribute Park, which is postponed on July ninth, two thousand nineteen. Council meeting for request has been withdrawn by the advocate, advocates. Any questions for Mr. Pritchard? Seeing none, is there a motion to postpone this item indefinitely?
Some.
The motion is second.
Second.
Councilmember Christopherson. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
That item passes. Agenda item number twenty-three, a resolution approving the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan for the city of Eau Claire. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Windsor? Seeing none, a motion by Councilmember Clint Hammer, I'm sorry, Councilmember Worthman, and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
Do you have an amendment?
Okay.
I wonder if I could yield to Mr. Worthman, who would like to speak first?
I'm sorry, what?
I'd like to yield to Mr. Worthman, who would like to speak first?
Council President. Thank you, Council President. Appreciate being recognized. Thank you for this opportunity. Just want to first of all, thank our city staff. Mr. Windsor's our finance director, and all of the work of our city staff that goes into preparing the capital improvement. You know, I think one of the things that I was encouraged by this process was to see how many people showed up last night to have input on the budget. We joked, but it's actually not even a joke that in past years, it's sometimes one to three people that will come down to talk about our capital improvement plan, even though it's many tens of millions of dollars that are spent within our community. So to me, it was actually really encouraging to have people come down last night to speak on everything from the transit system to our parks and improvements in our parks, to the issues around affordable housing and how do we address that? It was a packed house last night, and to me, that just signals that not only are people starting to want to get involved, but I think we're also, all of us together, kind of creating that environment where people feel that they really can get involved and make an impact on the local level. So to me, it was a great night, I know it went along, but it was a really encouraging thing, I think, to see the participation. The first amendment that I want to bring forward this evening deals with affordable housing, and how do we make sure that we are making it an even larger priority? And I want to first give my thanks to our city manager, Mr. Peters, for recognizing and bringing forward the change in the capital improvement plan that we have seen and saw last night that would offer two hundred thousand dollars to help encourage more private development around affordable housing. As folks know, the focus of that really is on single-family and as that's spelled out and enumerated in the change. But I want to just give my thanks, I think, first and foremost, to Mr. Peters for the work on that. I know it came together on short notice, and I know that that takes a lot of work, but I'm encouraged to see us move in that direction. I think one of the things we heard last night is that the issue of housing in our community is deep, and it is something that, you know, I couldn't help but be moved by hearing some of the stories that we heard last night of people who have actually, are actually today, right now, thinking about what are their next steps. Living in a hotel for the time being while their home is demolished. We heard someone say last evening that we're lucky that we have schoolchildren who have a place in a hotel room, and yet, at the same time, we know that they're growing up in a situation where, in fact, they're exposed to potentially drugs, potentially crime, potentially prostitution, and that we're calling them lucky that they even have a roof over their head. We heard stories last night of people saying, you know, we need to make this a stronger priority in our community. And how do we make sure, you know, we may not, and this is the hard truth, we may not be able to help some of the people who are going to be out on the streets in the next few days. We may not be able to help them in this specific budget. But my hope is, and the hope with this amendment that I'm about to offer, is that we can in fact take a larger step in that direction toward encouraging and incentivizing more affordable housing, not just for single-family, but also for multifamily and for rentals in our community. So today, I'm going to be offering an amendment seconded, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, which is to similarly move forward five hundred thousand dollars in our capital improvement plan from year four to next year to give us the tools and the opportunity to be able to incentivize and work toward more multifamily affordable homes. Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to speak. I'll hand this out. I'll read the motion. Hereby move to amend proposed two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan for Fund four thirty-four land building and equipment by moving five hundred thousand in funding from year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty to support the development of multifamily affordable housing. I want to thank our finance director for helping me with the wording.
We have a motion seconded by Councilmember Beaton and Councilmember Beaton, would you wish to speak?
Thank you. There's a lot of feelings that I have and a lot of emotions, so I wrote my comments, so I'm going to read them. First, I wanted to give a really big, also give a really big shout out to our city staff. In this budget, when it comes to affordable housing and lots of different things, I see staff recognizing new priorities in this council and attempting to, this, attempting this enormous task of turning this really big ship in a new direction, and that isn't easy. And I wanted to say how grateful I am that we're all in this together in turning that ship. I also wanted to give my sincerest thanks to the folks we heard from last night. To those folks, your stories have been heard. They're deeply valued, and sharing them is what it will take to make change in our city. We have to do better by you and our entire community, and I'm promising now that I'll do my part too, so that we can do better. I could hear last night the frustration in people's voices. We're arguing over how to use two hundred thousand dollars, just a tiny fraction of our budget, and I feel that frustration too. The reality is, we just don't have the money to do the things that we need to do on affordable housing and a whole host of other issues that we, that our city faces. We don't have the resources, and to listen to the stories we heard last night and to think about how our state and federal government is slashing funding to, that helps us address these issues at every opportunity makes me angry, and it's unacceptable. So I wanted to take the opportunity to ask folks that we heard from last night to keep coming to us as we work together to do what we can locally to get people in affordable housing and accessible homes. And I'm asking you to keep telling your stories, so they're being, until they're heard by our state and federal legislators too. Vote for people who hear your stories and take them seriously, because frankly, this city council and this community needs their help, and they're failing us now. But today, for this budget, the reality is, is we only have a few hundred thousand dollars. Our data show we have a need across the board for rentals and homeowner-occupied, single-family homes. We need more money to address that, and that's why I'm eager to propose this amendment with Councilmember Worthman. I want to be really clear that this amendment is not meant to undermine the importance of low-cost owner-occupied, single-family homes, though. Four years ago, I was on food share and housing insecure, and now, because of an extraordinary opportunity, I'm one year into homeownership. My house was the third cheapest house on the market when I bought it, and it's much like the homes that we're, that are being proposed by the city manager. Very small, under a thousand square feet, on a tiny plat of land, and it's been financially empowering for me to be able to build my own equity. I know that my situation can't be compared to others, and that folks in this community certainly have it. There are some folks who certainly have it harder than I do, but I want others in our community to find the kind of empowerment I have, and I think that our city can facilitate that, which is why I'll also be supporting the proposal for two hundred thousand dollars to develop low-cost owner-occupied, single-family homes. But I also recognize, especially with the stories that we heard, the urgent need for affordable rentals as well. After hearing those stories, we, I know that we just can't wait. I feel sure that we can find meaningful ways to spend this money with such competent and creative staff on our team. This is about serving real people in our community, and I see this as a huge opportunity to really get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Do you have a council members that wish to speak to this amendment? Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld. I certainly appreciate this going forward here. I struggling with how to, to, you know, be responsive to, you know, as quickly as we need to be, and I'm glad that this is in front of us so we can figure out, you know, what we're going to do about the housing crisis. And, you know, the CIP, as was mentioned last night, as soon as it's approved, is something that is, that really gives staff a green light to start moving forward on, on some things that we've been maybe talking about for years, and maybe have been in past CIPs, and this may be a new thing, but, but it really, you know, I think it's a good complement to the, to all the work that's been going on in the Chippewa Valley Housing Task Force and all the work that the Jona Affordable Housing Task Force has been doing and everyone else in the community, because it really backs up the ideas and the, and the work with dollars that we could use immediately if we, if we find an opportunity. And it is somewhat unpredictable where we'll find those opportunities sometimes, too. It might not be one of the things on our list that we decide to spend this money on, but I think that having it there allows us to seize the day, I guess, and seize the urgency of now that was mentioned by a speaker last night. So I can see myself supporting this. I realize it amounts to seven hundred thousand dollars for two thousand twenty, is my understanding with this amendment. And it may have us have to think very creatively of how we're going to populate the budget in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, but I think it shifts our, shifts the urgency to where we have the energy, and I think we're ready to move on some things. So I'm excited to have this in front of us and plan to support it.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Do you have a council members that wish to speak to this amendment? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Yeah, I, I was so grateful last night to be in this room because it was full of people who are passionate about making this community the best place that it can be. And when I look at all the work that has gone into our CIP and all of the hard expertise, I appreciate that so much, that so much professional energy and, and time has gone into that. At the same time, last night, I heard another kind of knowledge coming from people with the lived experience shared by so many in our community of struggling to make ends meet and struggling to find housing. And I think when you bring these two kinds of expertise together, that of people with lived experience and people who have, you know, planning experience, you can create some really remarkable change. So I just feel such a strong sense of opportunity in this moment, and I think that this is the time to begin to, you know, really make a strong investment in the economic mobility infrastructure for our community. We have, as a city, are responsible for being proactive and responsive to the changing needs of our community. And one of those needs is the urgent and immediate needs of our neighbors who are trying to figure out their housing situations. So I think that the time is now to be serious about addressing this crisis. I think many of the people who are sitting in these chairs ran with trying to make sure that people have housing options and economic opportunity options as a key part of their campaign. So I feel very much that there is the support of the community in really putting our money where our mouth is. And so I hope that we can do that tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I feel kind of like our comments are coming the same way they did last night in the public hearing where there were so many passionate causes that it was one and then another. So it was skateboarding and affordable housing and parks. And as our colleague, Mr. Worthman, said, it, we should have been, we are proud that all of those people felt safe and heard coming to this. we are proud that all of those people felt safe and heard coming to this, coming to this meeting to, to express their needs. I, I want to just shift my, my focus a little bit because I think that money is, is simply congealed energy. It's, it's a unit of our energetic investment. And right now, it, it's a great symbol for the city as a government to weigh in on this particular item because it shows availability and willingness. But, but we don't really have a plan for what living project is going to use that $700,000. So that's, that's just a, a change in, in the way that we use the capital improvement plan. It's, we're using it to incentivize our community. So from that perspective, I want to caution us as a council that, that the city government is not the only part of our community that needs to step forward. I think that we as, as individuals who ran on affordable housing, who sit and, and hold those values of really caring for our neighbors and, and producing a loving community, that we really need to make sure other people step forward. The other people who have been at the table in the Chippewa Valley Affordable Housing Task Force, our financial institutions, developers, construction workers, nonprofits. Although the city can point in a direction and we can clear the way oftentimes with, with resolutions and policy, it really is the community as a whole that needs to move this, this huge project forward. So although I, I can support this, I, I don't, I don't support it. I support it as the symbol that it is of enormous support for a need in our community. But I do caution us on, on this particular precedent and what it might mean in the, in the years coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christoffersen. Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I also have actually concerns about this amendment. Obviously, it was, the bravery showed last night of people being vulnerable in a public space is very admirable and pretty amazing. So I do thank people for coming out. And obviously, there is a need for affordable housing. And I've learned a lot over the last year, over the last year since the Affordable Task Force between, with the city planners of Eau Claire and Altoona have been putting on. I've attended most of them and maybe missed one. I've learned a lot. Last week, I attended the two day conference here in Eau Claire about affordable housing, the statewide conference. And I guess one thing that I've learned through these experiences is that what we need to do to help solve this problem is to, affordable housing is on a continuum from shelters up until market rate would be on the other end of the continuum. And we need to fund and put resources towards every one of those buckets. And that, that's just, that's the, been the consistent message. And that's why I'm supportive of the city managers revised budget with the single family home. So that, the homeownership is very important to the people who move, people who are moving here for jobs and can't find a place to live and for the, for their just quality of life as well. I just, let's see. I just feel uneasy. I feel like this is a lot of money without, and I just found out about it, without vetting from city staff. I do feel uneasy about that. Because I thought a lot, I like to read what's in the packet and what to ask questions. And so that's why I feel uncomfortable. And just that there isn't a real big plan for, you know, I appreciate the flexibility, but just that what are we going to use it for? Oh, and then I guess another point I'd like to make is that, as the city manager wrote today, and actually I've been keeping in my notebook all the things that the city's been doing. I had my own notes and then he just kind of consolidated it as well. But all the other ideas that the city is working towards, and they do already address the multifamily housing, affordable housing with the, maybe the, if we pass the TIF or the TID and with the Transit Center, that's multifamily. And then just, there's already inertia towards those things. And so maybe it'd be more efficient to put our resources towards those things that are already going. There's also a lot of statewide grants, which we can go after now that the state budget passed those. So I just feel like there's a lot of balls already up in the air and that the city staff is going for. So that's just swirling around in my brain as I make sense of all this. So, yeah, I think that I'll be done.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you to members of the public who came out last night. They went home thinking like, what, like last night was a dream, you know? Councilmember Emmanuel, you know, six years ago would have fallen over if you would have told me that this is what a CIP public hearing would have looked like. I mean, it's pretty amazing. And as our colleagues shared tonight, just the courage and to put your, okay, I'll say all of us have a hairy, warty story. So this is not singling anybody out. And to put your own hairy, warty story up for everybody, I mean, you know, it's just, it's very humbling. So I honor everybody who shared. I will be supporting this amendment tonight. And I want to share how and why I can support this. I think that this, for me, I keep in mind that this is a plan. This is not a prescriptive document necessarily. It's a plan. And I, I share these just to share my heart, not to dispute anything anybody said, and I honor what everybody shared here tonight. To me, it's a plan and it gives very clear direction to say, these are the big kind of policy priorities that we would like staff to be working on if, if this were to go forward. And I think about, there's other parts in our plan that do not have something that's fleshed out. It's, let's see if we get the funding and then we'll put together surveys and we'll get some proposals together. We'll bring it back before the city council. And so to me, this is, that's pretty similar. I also acknowledge that it's, I feel sometimes that we really stumble, council and staff and community, we stumble over each other on the dance floor of, no, do it my way, no, do it my way, oh, you guys are terrible dancers. And I think we have to stop that, like awkwardness on the dance floor. And I've had this idea in my mind for about six weeks and it just really got affirmed last night of something I want to work on in the operating budget, which I realize we're not touching at all this evening. But I've started to do some preliminary work and I shared this idea with the council, excuse me, the city manager. And that's, we've got to put a lasso around this whole spectrum of things that we're working on. We have to. We have to figure out as a community and as a city, like, what do we mean by poverty? What do we mean by affordable housing? What are we going to do? What aren't we going to do? And to say that we don't have a plan, I only, I don't think is actually true. We have so many neighborhood plans, comprehensive plans that call out this stuff. And it sits or is actionized in different ways. And we haven't put it all together in a lasso. So what I'm hoping to do in the operating budget is figure out a way that we can empower citizens, much like those people we heard last night, and community advocates and other stakeholders to actually come forward and help us look at a holistic approach of what we're doing here. If we don't do that, I, I, I am concerned that we're going to continue to stumble over each other. And I know that's not what anybody in this organization and probably most people in the community don't take any pleasure in stumbling over one another. We want to work together. So in that spirit, I, I, I see that this is not like a prescriptive amendment. And I also feel like we have plenty of time and plenty of room to come together and figure out, how do we make this work? We're going to be talking about a fountain soon. And I'll be supporting the fountain. And we don't have a plan about the fountain. We have no plan, no survey, no engagement. It's an idea. So if I'm going to support that, which I'll speak about later, I assure as heck we'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Councilmember Lawrie?
Thank you, President Weld. I will be supporting this motion too. I wanted to explain why I'm supporting. I've been, after listening to all the citizens when they came in last night, spoken about how struggled they are. I've been through a life through as they should before. So I, I think that's, you know, it's time for, and it's supporting, getting, please, kind of toward the budget or the goal of the, planning for the future right away. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawrie. Any other, Councilmember Christoffersen?
Thank you, President Weld. I do have a question and I don't really have a, a counting brain. But last night in the, when we were talking about the, the budget and the CIP, there, it, there was a point in time when, when we're retiring debt at a slower rate and things got really tight. I'm just curious, for my own edification, if we're borrowing or spending this money earlier, does that in any way affect what that looks like? Mr. Windsor?
Excellent question. The, it, it, we only borrow for certain projects within the CIP and we really tend to try to borrow for, for projects that have a, have a long life, usually a life longer than 20 years. Because most of the bonds that we issue are for, for a term of 20 years. So for this affordable housing project, we were actually not intending on borrowing the funds. We were intending on use, using fund balance. So every year we use, you know, it varies in the CIP, but you know, somewhere around $3 million of, of fund balance. And so that's, that was our plan on how to fund all elements of the affordable housing initiative or all years of that. So it doesn't affect that debt curve at all. What it will do is, and I, and I put up a, a chart last, last evening that showed how our fund balance actually, I think, was growing a little bit in 2020 and then slowly declines. Well, that growth in 2020 won't occur. But at the, at the end of the five year period, we're going to be in exactly the same place as what that plan was. Because this moves, it moves the spending of that cash earlier in the plan but decreases the amount that we're spending later in the plan. So essentially, it's an offset.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you. What? I got that. Thank you. Based on what you just said, in 2023, is that, is there a potential if we don't have the excess funds by unspent, by unspent money in the, the term, well, no. In the other part of our budget that is not capital?
Right.
The operating budget. Is there a possibility that in 2023, that's going to put us in a position where we're not as well situated for supporting our, I don't know what's going on here. The, we put some, put some things in place that assured that our, our bond rating would not suffer. Is this going to threaten that, that initiative?
So I, I believe, again, another excellent question. And I, I believe what you were, what you were getting at, Councilmember Klinkhammer, is that when I, when I put these types of tables together, there are, are many assumptions that are going into this, to this table. And, and so I'm, I'm projecting out forward what I think is going to be happening with the operating budget and how much money each year we're going to be returning to fund balance from the operating budget. And that's based upon 10 years of historical averages that I use to, to, to build those, to, to build those models. And so there are assumptions built into here that, you know, each year we will, we will, through a combination of over realizing revenues and under expen, under expending our budgets, that we'll put somewhere around $2 million back into fund, fund balance. So that's all taken into account here. If we don't have those positive budget results, then we'll, we would draw down fund balance at a faster rate than what is shown in this. So to answer your question directly, if we, you know, if we move this use of $500,000 of fund balance from 2023 to 2020, and we don't, and those assumptions that I've built in don't, don't occur, there is a possibility that our, you know, will be, you know, lower than that 18% in, in, in 2023. That possibility does exist. Now, I mean, I'm reasonably comfortable in the assumptions that I've built into the model. But there is, there is that, that possibility that, that, that that could happen. Now, we have time between now and then to make course corrections if that, if we start seeing that happening. And it might mean that there are other projects in 20, you know, in future year CIPs in 2021 or 2022 where we say, well, either we're going to have to not do that project or scale it back, or maybe we have to borrow for another project that we had intended to use cash for. So there are ways that we can make corrections along the way so that, certainly so that we don't drop below our fund balance policy. Because that's where we would start affecting our, our bond ratings.
Thank you. I agree with some of the comments that Councilmember Christoffersen and Bergy have stated. I think it took a lot of courage for the people that spoke last evening about their situation. And, and I appreciated the city manager's memo to us regarding some of the measures that are being made and efforts that are going to occur regardless of the outcome of this amendment. But if we are going to make this dramatic a change, I guess I would like more thought going into it and more, despite what Councilmember Emmanuel said. I think that we're going to make this move, I would want more assurance that the efforts that are being made are going to have the effect that we desire. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case. And I think that the effect could have adverse impact going forward. So I'm not going to support this amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, ever. Councilmember Christoffersen?
Thank you, President Weld. May I have permission to just raise a question with Councilmember Worthman? I'm wondering if in this motion to amend, if a total, a total moving forward, a total of $500,000 with the 200 proposed by Mr. Peters and $300,000 in addition, if that would move this intention in the direction that you would want? this intention in the direction that you would want?
Could I have you repeat the question?
Yes, I'm wondering if the 200,000 that Mr. Peters is suggesting for affordable housing with 300,000 in this amendment, a total of 500,000 for affordable housing in 2020 would achieve what Mr. Worthman is hoping?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson for the question.
The reasoning, I'll just kind of speak a little bit to the reasoning for this amount, but part of it was that that was an amount identified in a future year. So similarly, I felt it would make sense to move that same budget amount forward. I think on top of that, I had a chance to speak with some of our city staff about different ideas. I was considering an amendment a few weeks ago about different ideas. You know, one of the feedback I got is that, you know, ideas like a revolving loan fund often take, you know, $400,000 potentially, a no-interest revolving loan fund to help incentivize affordable housing. Some of these ideas just take a little bit more funding. One of the ideas being talked about is, can we help incentivize by paying, helping to pay for development, for the fees, inspection fees, you know, the different fees associated with building, plus potentially, can we incentivize land acquisition? So the amount was kind of based on some of the conversations that I had had and the fact that 500,000 was identified in year four of the budget.
Any other? Councilmember Manuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld. This is a question probably for the city manager, if I may, and I'm not asking this to try to change anybody's minds, I think, just to get information out for anybody who's watching or for the press. Is it not true that any allocation of these funds would come back before city council for approval?
Mr. Peters?
It would depend on what the project is and what needs to be approved. So, I mean, if this, if we were allocating money for a project that involved the purchase of something that fell below the purchasing limits that don't require council approval, then no, it wouldn't come back. So it would all depend on what the project is. So if it is a loan pool, obviously, you know, establishing the criteria for a loan pool would come back. If it's a half-million-dollar building project, you know, that certainly exceeds the purchasing requirements, and that would come back to council. So it would all depend on what the project is or was, you know, and whether it met policy guidelines that would require, you know, council approval. But most likely, unless it was a direct purchase that was under the purchasing guidelines, it would involve some type of approval or review by the city council.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bergy?
I have a question, if that's okay, counsel?
Okay.
And I think it might be for the city manager or, but would it be, if, would it be possible, let's say this doesn't, this amendment doesn't pass, would it be possible, I'm guessing it would be, for it to come to the 500,000 to be put in the CIP for next year and then for 2021?
If you recall, we had a similar conversation to this in one of the CIP work sessions. And there's a lot that is, was outlined in the memo that I sent out and that we're working on, including ideas like revolving loan funds or, you know, projects or other types of assistance. And to the extent that within, you know, during this next 12 months, if the, call it the meat goes on the bones of some of those ideas, when we're sitting here a year from now, it's entirely possible that, you know, the manager's budget would include money that's been moved, you know, around within that recommendation to then follow through with ideas that had, you know, been developed over the next, you know, the next 12 months. So there's, that is definitely a possibility that next year's CIP can move things forward if, in the next 12 months, there are ideas that are developed to the point where they, you know, are very specific, concrete ideas that, you know, can be explained to somebody and put into the CIP and then attach the funding to go with it.
Thank you.
Any other? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, President Weld. Because I have a question for Mr. Peters. I guess the, I guess somewhat similarly, we can, if we don't find opportunities and we do set aside an extra 500,000, we can also choose not to spend all of that money, correct?
Certainly.
Any other comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, President Weld. So it sounds like what I'm hearing is that what this amendment does is it gives us the flexibility to make time-sensitive and targeted interventions on this issue. And I think for me, because we will be approving any significant use of the funds as a body and because there's no requirement that this be spent, it makes me confident that because this is a time-sensitive crisis for people involved, that we can be responsive and proactive in the way that we need to be without, you know, any pressure of being locked into anything. Thank you.
I'd like to weigh in. I think, and I've mentioned in one of our work sessions too, I'm a big fan of a plan and being able to know what we're going to do with that money and where it's going to go and how it's going to be spent. I appreciate the spirit of the $500,000 and what its intent is, and certainly I'm, you know, confident that good things can come from it. But again, I really would like to see, you know, what that looks like. And I think in the past, we've kind of set that precedent that we've, you know, we've budgeted money for specific things, and I think it's important to, you know, to keep that in mind. I respect Councilmember Beaton's comments, though, that we have a very creative and talented and smart staff and council that possibly and potentially, and more than likely, and will come up with a plan that does make sense and is sustainable and will meet the needs and attain the goals that we're hoping for. So I am torn to a certain degree, and I'm wondering if, what would maybe make me feel a little more comfortable, if a friendly amendment to the motion would, if we could include some language that actually states that any expenditures from this $500,000 would have to be approved by council?
Could we ask staff about their feelings about that? Just given your answer, it sounds like most projects would already be getting approval. Kind of how would this change the operations of?
Well, again, because we, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Again, because we don't really know what the project would be, it's very difficult to say. The, again, generally, certainly because of the interest in the topic, you know, if we were purchasing something or, you know, doing something within the purchasing policy, we could inform council. I mean, and I think there'd be great interest in wanting to be informed, you know, about what we were doing there. It would be unusual to have a, you know, a, I guess, a restriction that, you know, that basically kind of goes around or outside, you know, the purchasing policy. But that said, in terms of, because we don't know what, how or when this would be used, you know, to the extent that if there's a proposal, you know, that goes forward that you'd like that to come back to council, I don't see that as being problematic.
Comfortable with that?
Sure.
I was making a note, so I was trying to come up with something, but, you know, it's in a current CIP, so, I mean, the funds are appropriated and ready to be spent, but I just noted any, any project utilizing these funds would need prior approval from city council or something to that effect. Other?
Okay. Councilmember Klinkhammer? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember, Mr. Windsor?
I mean, but the only thing that I was thinking about related to this discussion is that, you know, technically, when, when the council adopts the CIP at this point, it is not appropriating the funds. The actual appropriation of the funds doesn't incur until, until we adopt the operating budget in November. So, I mean, there, you know, I think that there certainly could be something probably worked into the motion that, you know, that says that, you know, any expenditure of funds is contingent upon, you know, approval by the city council or the development of a plan that's approved by the city council or something along those, along those lines. Because again, we won't actually appropriate the funds or have the authority to spend any of the money until, really until January 1st, but the appropriation occurs in late November.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you. Mr. President, when we get involved in a street building project or some other event where, that we rely very strongly on engineers to provide us with the insight on these, I get a little uncomfortable making this kind of an alteration to the capital and budget on the fly, so to speak. I think that our city managers' comment about moving it, possibly moving it forward into the 2021 segment, where we would have a better plan, well-thought-out means of having the biggest impact of using this money sooner than 2023, it makes infinite sense to me because it's not likely that even if we pass this amendment to the CIP, that any of the people that spoke last night would be impacted in any timeframe that we would want them to be. So I, again, I just don't think that making this kind of an adjustment at this juncture in our process is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, President Weld. I guess on the discussion around the timing, I think, as our finance director mentioned, you know, there, it's going to be a while before we can even use funding set for 2020. It's going to be like five months from now. So at the same time, you know, it'll be 17 months from now that will be the deadline for us to use that funding, and even if we, you know, even if we don't find projects that we think it's valid to use that money, we can, we don't have to spend it. So I think, I think it's kind of actually a good sweet spot of time that we're putting this priority because it's, because I think a lot has changed in the last five months, and I can think of what, you know, where we'd be at in five months from now, and then we have a whole nother 12 months to potentially utilize that money, and if we, but we also don't have to if we don't have a good opportunity, so I wanted to make that point.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President Weld. I'm finding myself softening in my regard to this motion, and it would, it would be in this, this place. The statements from our constituents last night really spoke not so much about a plan, but a really deep need that affects the quality and the health of our community. I really trust the skill of our staff and our administration to not reactively plan out of a sense of urgency, but to see, use this money and this allocation as a signal to the community that we are completely with them in the intention of making meaningful change in our situation of housing. But again, it, my support arises out of the level of trust that we'll make a wise and measured decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. And I wanted to piggyback off of that comment from Councilmember Christopherson to say that the task force that Mr. Scott Allen and others are working with, I believe that those recommendations are coming back to us probably in the next few weeks even. They've been finalized, the same ones that we saw in February. Those 29 recommendations are, I think, moving at the right pace. And another thing that I want to bring to folks' attention is already a discussion around, and I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Scott Allen about this too, and Councilmember Beaton, the Affordable Housing Committee or Commission is another thing that's already in the works. And so given that, given their expertise, given the plan that's been worked on for, it's over a year now, this plan, 29 points over a year, I think that all these things give us the foundation that we need to make sure, and with this amendment to it as well, I think we're putting ourselves in a strong, a strong place to make sure it's spent wisely. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I just kind of have a parallel comment. Talking about the time-sensitive nature of this, which I agree, but also I also, like the 500,000 or whatever is decided, I mean, I wouldn't think anything would come out of that for a year or two, so there is that disconnect. But what people, I have been working with the Maples residents for almost a year now, and I've been working closely with city staff and health department, and I just want to call out like what health department, DHS, and city staff have been doing with their Maples residents. They've been meeting with them frequently, building relationships. I know DHS met with them today. They're just offering lots of support, and so that's happening right now. So I just want to call that out. It's the, people are, people from our city are helping, and our county, our residents, and I just want to thank them for that. And it's those relationships that I've seen grow, and it's been a little rocky at times with trust building, which makes sense, but I do see progress being made, and I'm just really thankful for that.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I really appreciate you bringing that up, Councilmember Bergy, and I also want to kind of add to that, that I think that we're seeing such engagement of, like, folks who are actively being served by our city already, being engaged to help shape these solutions. I think that that's why we saw them last night, because they're hearing their government listen to them, and they're seeing their government care about them. And so I guess that, that help that is being given, that we're seeing being given by the city and the county is directly helping people's lives and engaging them in our local democracy. So a sincere thank you to everybody who's working on that.
Any other discussion or comments? So we are just, this is just regarding the amendment. So we have a motion, a second, and discussion. Mr. Klink, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Law?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Benjamin?
Aye.
That amendment passes. Back to the capital improvement plan as it was presented. Any other discussion or amendments? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I have another amendment to the
I have another amendment to the CIP. I guess I'll take the opportunity, since I have the mic again, to thank our city staff for, for working on the CIP, and they, they did also help us with this amendment as well. This amendment, I'll, I'll just read it. I hereby move to amend the 2020, 2024 Capital Improvement Plan for Fund 450 Parks and Recreation by adding $20,000 in 2020 to fund an addition, fund the addition of a skate plaza at Boyd Park to accommodate this new project. 2020 funding for the following projects are reduced. And so, basically, I'll, I'll pass this out, but there's six different funds that are reduced slightly to make room in the budget for this project.
So, we have a motion, is there a second? Councilmember Winsen is the second. Does she want to speak further?
Yes, thank you. And I, I've been, I've heard from the, the group who, who have been organizing to raise money for a skate park for a couple of years now. They have reached out several times looking for help from the city to fund a public facility that is needed within our community. The, the skate park that we have down at Lake Shore is, is smaller than, than other communities compared to our size, and actually smaller than, smaller communities compared to our size. And so, um, so I think that this is something that is actually needed by adults and children within our community. I have never done so much research on skate parks until this week, but I've learned that, that skate parks, in my research, and also anecdotally in, in the comments that we heard last night, I've learned that skate parks are really not only a place for physical activity, but also offer a place for children to find mentorship and positive adult role models and, and positive adult relationships. It offers them a place to learn from each other and teach each other and build community. Skate parks also offer a place for people to express their hobby and their sport that, that doesn't damage public infrastructure. And so, I, I think that it's important for our city to fund and support financially this project as we do for projects relating, we have a, we have a hockey facility that we fund, we put a lot of money into, we have a public pool, and we have other public programming that supports these exact same goals that this skate park is, that, that this skate park would achieve. I do want to raise that the skate park group does have an MOU with the city, and that MOU can, can be amended and would need to be amended after, if this amendment were to be approved. This is something that has been done in the past by the city, so there is precedent for a changing MOU. I think that, yeah, I guess I'll just end by saying, I think that it's our responsibility as a city that encourages fun and, and activity, and also a positive social spaces for people. It's our responsibility to help invest in this, so, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton, Councilmember Worthman, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I'll keep you short, but thank you, Council. President, just want to say thank you to all of the folks who came down last night to speak on this as well. I think we had people of all ages, all economic backgrounds, talking about how this would help build our community, and, you know, I, I was just, again, just really happy to see people feel like they can come down to city council and, and talk about the CIP and talk about what we can do to help improve our neighborhoods. And this is a small thing, 20,000, you know, on top of the, the, the money they've already fundraised, but I think it helps send a signal, not only to them, but also potentially to other donors who are looking at helping to make this project successful. So, thank you, Councilmember Beaton, for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Winsen. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I was very moved by what I heard last night from the skateboarders, and they have such a rich testimony to being young people, developing an interest, being integrated into our community, and then finding that as adults, they have this, they continue to have that same interest. I think that, that's something that's rare, when an interest or hobby that you have as a child really supports your lifestyle as an adult, and I, I think we want to pay attention to that and, and support that. However, I had a little different take than what my, my colleague, Ms. Beaton, had proposed, but I'm not exactly sure how to bring it into our public space. Could I have a little direction?
In regards to?
Well, maybe, I'll just keep talking.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Councilmember Christopherson and I had a chance to talk about this a little bit before the meeting, her resolution, and I wonder, just so that everyone can see both proposals, you might consider offering an amendment to the amendment just as a replacement, so we can have both in front of us, or maybe Council President Weld would allow Councilmember Christopherson to pass, pass out her resolution ahead of time.
Is it something that we would be voting on, on your resolution, or is it?
We would be.
Then I guess I would recommend proposing an amendment to the amendment.
Thank you. Then I'm proposing an amendment to the amendment. My, the, the verbiage I'll, I'll hand out here is slightly different, and I'll just, I'll say something, and then I'll, I'll simply read it. Again, what captures me about our position as governmental officials is how do we motivate, connect with, and bring the desires of our, our constituents forward? And to me, it's all about connecting them with their community, empowering them to have the resources in the community to bring their needs into being, and not only to rely on the city to, to make things happen. Some of the examples that Councilmember Beaton used, like the pool or Hobbs Ice Arena, those, those are major capital, and then once, once they are built, then of course, they're in the capital plan. What I'm suggesting, and I'll, is that we come alongside the skate park group, and I personally would be willing to help them complete that fundraising, but going to therefore be it resolved that the City of Eau Claire supports including the skate park and the board, Boyd Park Plus design while the fundraising is completed. A representative of the city council will support the Boyd Park Skate Plaza Group to complete the fundraising consistent with the memorandum of understanding between the parties. Be it further resolved that the council hereby moves to amend the 2020, 2024 Capital Improvement Plan and to appropriate $75,000 in the CIP for 2020 while their fundraising is being completed. So, this allows them to, to move forward without that, are you done yet? Are you done yet? Are you done yet? I think it acknowledges in the motion that we make a significant commitment to them being a presence in a community that would be supported and expanded. So, I would ask for a second.
Okay. Is there a second? So, we have a motion, did you wish to?
Yeah, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, President Weld. You can see that I, I don't bring a lot of legislation, because I can never tell when I'm, when I'm presenting it or whether I'm speaking to it, I'm just speaking the whole In bringing this motion, I, I really had these concerns. I, I so want to stand in support of, of this interest. It is underrepresented in the, the motion. It talks about, we don't have enough facilities here to support the existing local demand or even to match the investment of surrounding communities, and if nothing else would make us feel like we've got to step up, that, that would be it. But again, I, I really think that this group of young adults have the capacity with assistance to really network more strongly, because we're going to want more skate parks, and I want to make sure that they are completely supported and, I don't know exactly the word I want, but I want them to feel confident that, that the money will be there, the community is going to just respond to them because of, of who they are and how they are placed in our, in our community. So, I see this motion as being the difference of coming alongside to empower them in the community versus coming alongside of them to give them something that they do actually, I mean, they do deserve, but I think, I think it's there for them. So, it's, I'm, I'm aligned with Ms. Beaton, but I, I prefer to see them empowered in the community as opposed to giving them the $20,000.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Anderson, did you wish to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this amendment, to the amendment? Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. I have, if it's okay, I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much. First of all, I love the spirit of this, so I, I really appreciate that of not questioning, are we going to let these skateboarders, and of like, how do we welcome and embrace skateboarders in our community, and what did somebody say? Wheel, wheel riders, wheelers? I don't know. The wheel community. So, my, a couple of questions. I, I don't think I'm, I guess maybe, can you clarify for me, is this straight up allocating $75,000 from the CIP? Or when you say go alongside of the group, what, what does that look like, or what do you, how can I better understand that?
Thank you. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. So, in my conversations with staff over the last couple of weeks, it's my understanding that the, whatever the fund is that holds fundraising for parks improvements, the Community Parks Association has about $44,000 in cash raised. When they, they have an application that has been tentatively approved for, that will give them the last money in, so they have a gap of about $11,000. And I'm, I'm, I know that I, I just know the money is there, I know where that money is. So, I'm willing to support them so they have the success of having completed that goal, so that really the $75,000 in the CIP is recognizing this money as whole.
If I could clarify?
Councilmember Major Peters.
Thank you, President Weld. Perhaps if I could clarify our understanding of what that language means. So, in the CIP, so right now, the skateboard project's not in the CIP. I mean, it, there's an MOU to raise money, but it's not actually in the CIP. So, this would put it into the CIP, and many times when we have, we identify the funding sources for the item, and essentially, this would be in there as a project in 2020, and the funding source for it would be the contribution from the, from the MOU, basically. So, it wouldn't be new money per se that, that is coming from either fund balance or from borrowing. It would be the project is identified, but the money or the source of the money would be the, the money that's being raised through the MOU as described by Councilmember Christopherson. Does that help?
It does. Maybe I can listen more, maybe the pieces will fall into place. Thank you. Thank you for the effort. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Beaton.
I guess I'm, I understand things in a way, and I want to just clarify that what my understanding is, is true and correct. So, my understanding is this, the proposal from Councilmember Christopherson would allocate no public dollars, but would just recognize the project in, in the CIP as a project, whereas the, I think the difference in the two proposals is, is $20,000 of public money versus $0 of public money. Either way, it would be recognized in the CIP.
That would be, I'm looking at Jay, but that would be our understanding of the different proposals as well, but maybe Jay has some, Mr. Winsen has some further clarification on that.
Just one, one kind of subtle, and perhaps it's a technical distinction, but under the amendment that you offered, Councilmember Beaton, there would be $20,000 in the CIP for this project. Now, if the total cost of the project is $75,000, there's still, at that point, $55,000 that has not been appropriated. So, at some point, that $55,000 would need to come back to the city council for appropriation of this project before we could spend it. Under, under the amendment proposed by, by Councilmember Christopherson, the full $75,000 is, is appropriated, and as soon as the group places that, you know, complies with the terms of the MOU in terms of turning over those funds to us, we can proceed with, could proceed with that expenditure. But you're absolutely correct. The other distinction is that your proposal includes $20,000 of public dollar, public dollars going towards this project, whereas I believe Councilmember Christopherson's proposal does not include any public dollars going towards this project.
And can you also clarify, Mr. Winsen's, we had a phone call discussion about kind of clarifying how that would all work in, when we are amending the MOU. Is that, that right? So, so kind of specifying the allocation of that $20,000 contingent on successful completion of fundraising?
Right, yeah, and, and that would, you know, certainly, that could be included, the clause could be included as a provision when the MOU comes back through the city council for, for revision.
Thank you.
It's actually a question.
Prime escape.
Just for clarification, that if they had met their MOU, say, next, they met the provision of the MOU next summer, you would have brought back budget amendment next summer as soon as they hit it?
Yeah, absolutely. Just like we make other budget amendments, quarterly adjustments, it would have come back, had to come back through for appropriation at that time.
Thanks.
Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld. So, I guess even with the $20,000 from the city in the original amendment, there would still be $11,000 of fundraising required in order to, to reach the 55,000, or is there, I guess that we don't know what the MOU would look like exactly, because we haven't changed that, but, um, and what, what we heard from the skating, from some of the representatives of the skating community is that they've raised 50,000 now, so I guess I'm not sure exactly, there may, what I'm kind of interested in is maybe there's a way for us to not only have elements of this motion and have a council member to support them, but also have some city money to support them, because I think that is an important part of the, the package, I think, is to have the, the city putting some funding toward this. I do think they've had a lot of great support in the past, including from our city staff to, to help with fundraising, so it's hard to say exactly how much more effort would be needed without the city putting funding toward it. I guess maybe I don't have a question so much as a broader question of not knowing exactly how we can help in, in all the best ways, but, so I'll just be quiet for now.
Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Another question, if I may, of the mover, to see if you can help me understand, what does it look like to have a representative of the city council to support the group on their fundraising efforts? Is it a specific person? Is it a district rep? Does it mean they go to the fundraising meetings? I like the idea of us being supportive. I, I'm just trying to visualize, what does that mean? I'm just trying to visualize, what does that mean?
Councilmember Christoffersen.
Thank you, President Weld. Councilmember Emanuel, in creating this amendment, I am willing to be that person, but I didn't want to assume that that was the only or best way. But I'm certainly willing to stand in the gap.
Do you have a follow? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you. Regardless of who it is, and if it was you, you have my full trust and confidence. What does that look like? Is it going with them to funders to say, I'm here on behalf of the City Council to say, we're in solidarity with you? Is it kind of a liaison between the group and city staff? I'm just having a hard time understanding what it means. Sorry.
Councilmember Christoffersen.
Thank you, President Weld. So I want to be clear. So I'm going to just say what came to my mind in my previous work experience, working with young adults and teens, is A, you are at meetings interpreting from them and to them their own marketing information. You're supporting them in their own presentations, but then you're also using your own network or community contacts to amplify what their impact might be. And that's the one piece that I thought was missing, is they've been disappointed and felt that they'd been neglected, and it seems to me that there are people, if approached by people of other generations, might recognize the need and respond positively. So I'm just, I was just thinking from my past experience that there would be ways to empower and amplify what they've already done very successfully.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Beaton.
So I, I guess I want to say, while I respect and appreciate the amendment and really appreciate the opportunity to be able to look at both at the same time, both options, I won't be supporting the amendment to the amendment. I think it's important for our city to invest financially in projects like these. I also know that this group, I see this group, they've raised $50,000, or as far as what they've said, and I see that they are, they are invested. They've already invested their time and their passion into this project. I do also know that they had a previous agreement, an unofficial agreement, but a previous agreement with city staff who are no longer here, a city staff who, staff member who is retired, committing to matching funds from the city. And we're not, I'm not proposing that we, that we match their fundraising, but I think that, you know, we obviously have no legal obligation to honor that informal agreement. But I think, I think it, it's important to me that we, we recognize that informal agreement was there, and that we, while we may not be able to match, while we may not be able to honor the full informal agreement, that we kind of show up for this group, that we recognize that they've done a lot of work to raise the money and kind of give them at least some of what they felt that they were promised. And so I won't be, I won't be supporting this amendment. I also do think that it sounds like they're going to be continuing with their fundraising efforts, and so I think that there is, even if we do decide to allocate or to commit public dollars, I think that there is a big opportunity for this council and the city organization to support this group in fundraising and helping them to organize their group into a fundraising, fundraising machine for lots of skate parks across the city. And so, so with respect to Councilmember Christoffersen, I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'm just wondering, as I kind of try to wrap my brain around these two, the amendment and the amendment to the amendment, if there's a way to kind of combine them, if there's a way to, you know, include some of the sort of dedicated support toward fundraising and toward moving this project along in terms of appropriating some of those dollars, and then also adding the piece of some, that $20,000 commitment from the city. I'm not sure if there's a way to kind of put those together, or what the thought would be about that.
Councilmember Beaton.
Could we get some advice from city attorney Nick on how to do that?
I think, if I understand it correctly, the way probably to do it would be to largely utilize Councilmember Christoffersen's motion, because you're having, you have the total implementation of the 75,000. In the 2020 CIP, you have some of the background language and the offer of assistance, but then you'd probably just add, you'd make the motion, in essence, perhaps another, you know, be it further resolved. So those funds would augment and be used towards the $75,000 total, if, again, I'm understanding the intent correctly.
Do we need a third amendment to the amendment to the amendment?
You could. Or we're at something close to committee of a whole here, and you could just, you know, decide to friendly it. But it sounds like that that would be the potential compromise. I mean, that, again, gets all those things done. I mean, so the only sort of policy issue, obviously, that's left, you know, or would be combined as opposed to be voted on separately, is the notion of whether it's desirable as a policy matter of you all to partially fund this with public city dollars. You'd have to, you'd still be voting on that, but you'd be voting on it as a package.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Is it, is it possible to offer that as a friendly amendment to add the $20,000 addition to the, to the motion that Councilmember Christoffersen presented? Would that be an amendment that would satisfy you?
Councilmember Christoffersen.
President Weld, I, I'm willing to consider that. Here would be my two concerns, and again, I don't want to have this interpreted in any way that I'm not supportive of the skateboard community having this park and more parks in Eau Claire. My concern, first of all, would be I, I would ask a question about, I don't think they need $20,000. I think their gap is less than that. So if it could be some language that says the gap would be met by public funds or something like that. But the other question I have is, although in our conversation with Councilmember Beaton, MOUs have been amended in the past, they haven't been amended out of the, from what I understand from Mr. Winsens, it's not been an amendment about the amount that is owed. So I would, I would have that question also before I could respond. Would this be a precedent in the way that an MOU has been amended?
You certainly have the ability to amend MOUs. Have we changed them in the past? I guess nothing jumps to mind in exactly this way, but certainly, you know, conditions change. I mean, you have something in your CIP now, you know, on the Carson Park. Now, whether that's a precedent that says you should put public money in or you shouldn't, I mean, you all can decide that policy. I mean, but what's in your CIP is substantially less, substantially less than what, you know, advocates for an expanded, you know, remodeled version of Carson Park foresaw because the, you know, the fundraising didn't take off the way they had anticipated. But you're also not funding that whole project. You're funding, you know, a narrow sort of safety oriented part of it. So again, the funding decisions you are, is can you come in there? Can you amend it MOU? You can. Should you? When it is certainly true that over the last decade or more, you know, most of your new park improvements have been based on fundraising of private groups. I mean, to the point that myself and, you know, and other staff member, you know, we presented on a statewide basis of the success of these sort of MOUs. So you just have to balance that of if you get into the, if you start and then get into the habit of amending those, will that, in your policy determination, encourage fundraising on the private side? Or will it send a message that says, well, you really don't need to finish your private fundraising, even when you're awfully close, because you can just come in and ask us and we'll finish it for you? But again, you can see it either way, because of course, 50,000 is more than half. I mean, it's pushing, you know, it's two thirds, and so, you know, again, those are the tough sort of policy calls that you got to make with the public dollar. But bottom line is, you get to make it. You have the ability to make that sort of amendment. You know, I'll throw a one last thought, is if you don't really want to amend it, you could say, yes, please do 75,000 per the amendment, but we are willing to make it bigger and better. And, you know, you could put 20,000 on top of that, but still hold them to their initial commitment to 75. There's another option for you. Discuss amongst yourselves.
Any discussion, comments, questions? I guess we have the two amendments before us. The most recent would be the amendment to the amendment offered by Councilmember Christoffersen. So is there any more discussion in regards to that amendment? Councilmember Verdi.
Thank you, President Weld. I was wondering, I have a question for Councilmember Christoffersen, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Did, have you run this by the skateboarding group, this amendment, and what their thoughts were?
Councilmember Christoffersen.
No, I have not.
Any other questions or discussion in regards to the amendment to the amendment? Councilmember Emanuel.
I'm wondering if Councilmember Christoffersen would allow me to insert her name here, just so we have, if this passes, we have some clarification. So may I make a friendly, I'd like to offer a friendly motion to the mover, that the words, the word Jill Christoffersen is inserted in here, so it would be a representative, comma, Jill Christoffersen, comma, of the City Council, et cetera. So her name is simply inserted in there to take out any ambiguity.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would accept that. Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make one. See clarification. Thank you, Council President. That this, that this has been moved by Councilmember Christoffersen and seconded by, is it Councilmember Anderson? Would the mover accept a friendly amendment to take essentially the language of this 20,000 and make, create another, therefore be it resolved, that inserts this spending of 20,000 in public funds from Fund 450?
Thank you, President Weld. I would just go back to my, I am not against using, I prefer, I actually prefer the motion as it is. I'm not against using the public funds, but I, the amount, I'm just curious that that amount is more than what would actually be needed. So if there were some language about $15,000 or public funds to fill, to cover that gap funding, but I just don't believe it's $20,000 that they need to get their $75,000, based on my conversation. So I have, I have a yes, a qualified yes to.
I'll take that. Just a quick clar.
Add up to in front of 20,000 in the motion.
No left side.
That's different. Very different. Illegal.
Can I clarify one thing on Councilmember Emanuel's funding? Is it restricting, have it specifically named one in the event something were to happen, Councilmember Christoffersen? I just, I hate to see it so specific, and then all of a sudden, we can't meet them.
Falls off his skateboard.
Mr. Nick.
Yeah, I think we name council members often enough that I think it's fine to identify a specific member.
Not that anything's going to happen.
We're just going to have to comment on it further. Thank you.
Where are we at? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. As I read this, to me, it doesn't say anybody else is prohibited. It's just saying, as I interpret it, it's a formal way for the body to say, Councilmember Christoffersen, go forth, we got your back. And other people are certainly free to work on it within the confines of open meeting Procedural question probably for the city attorney. If in the event Councilmember Christoffersen's motion passes, may Councilmember Beaton continue to advocate for this $20,000? Since we're only voting on this one thing, can that be added on, or does that actually contradict what's occurring here?
Mr. Nick.
I take it as a substitute amendment, you know, unless there is some sort of, you know, reconciling of it, which so far there hasn't, of adding it in as a friendly, but otherwise, there's, there's, it's substantially different in form and intent, and so it's a substitute amendment to allow both items to be discussed. But if it would pass, I think it would subsume the earlier amendment.
Councilmember Christoffersen.
Thank you, President Weld. I wonder if I could bring the conversation to a close. I'm satisfied that this amendment would be voted up and down on its own merits without the, accepting the amendment of adding my name as the representative, but removing the up to $20,000 so that just the clear intent of the council can be expressed.
Any other comments? Councilmember Anderson.
Oh, Council President Weld, just a point of clarification. I'm not sure, Councilmember Christoffersen, did you mean to say you're wanting this motion to just stay as it is? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? In regards to the amendment to the amendment, City Clerk, please call the wall.
Councilmember Christoffersen.
Aye.
Emanuel.
No.
Gregert.
No.
Clinkham. Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
No.
Anderson.
No.
Beaton.
No.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
No.
So you're back to the amendment that was presented by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Wirthman. Is there any further discussion on that in regards? Councilmember Wirthman.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Councilmember Christopherson for, she has, even before tonight, stepped up in a, in a strong way to help, not only in her neighborhood, but this group with, you know, advice and support. And I, and I just want to know that I thank her for also stepping up with this amendment and just that this doesn't preclude you from also helping to continue the fundraising as well. And I, and I'm certain that they welcome the support and know that your support is there. So I just want to thank you for, for bringing this forward.
Any other discussion in regards to the amendment to the CIP in regards to the skatepark? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you. I have a few comments and then I would like to ask Councilmember Christopherson if she would be interested in continuing to serve kind of as a advocate formally on behalf of the council. I think I like that idea very much, so I'll be asking that in a minute. Many, many members of the skateboarding community came out over the last month to speak in support of this. And I think what's really compelling to me is that this is about building a community of acceptance and welcoming and that there's a lot of people, including young people, who don't fit into mainstream sports in our community and that this is another space that we can create to make sure that all people who wish to be active or more people who wish to be active have a healthy way to do that. And just this idea of, one of the stories that the speaker shared about their, I think their three-year-old coming to watch all the big kids or the grownups at the ramp and having to wait their turn and then to that parent's surprise, everybody stopped and let the little kid take a turn and that that little kid was even welcomed. And so I just thought that was really neat. And we certainly saw a good spectrum of age and different types of ability for skateboarding and many wheels in the community. And so I, I just think it's such a positive thing. Also philosophically think that we, a city, should put public dollars into activities like this. I mean, I think Dr. Kemp brought up a really good point of we wouldn't, you know, ask the basketballers to be raising money. We wouldn't ask people doing tennis courts to be raising money. And I think that our city does that to an extent because we have really messed up state revenue and shared revenue formulas. And so I don't blame the city for asking. It's how we get stuff done. We're seeing some really neat initiatives come forward because people are willing to go above and beyond. I also think that we have, we can make commitments to this and I'm proud to put some of my tax bill towards this to welcome more people in our community. Councilmember Christopherson, would you still have interest to serve in that capacity or maybe pass?
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President. Well, if I were invited by the skating community, I, maybe, yeah.
I think we'll just let it be organic then.
Any other discussion or comments in regards to the amendment that's been proposed? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President. Well, I, you know, I plan on supporting this amendment. I do think, you know, growing up with a number of skaters in my neighborhood and one who became a professional skateboarder, it's kind of, it hits close to home relatively for me in that way, even though it was about 30 years ago. But, and I, and we've really seen that the sport changed a lot. And I think that, you know, this part of the state maybe could really benefit from this. I think it could bring in people from, from outside of our community to visit Eau Claire for skate parks. And, you know, the Boyd Park location, one of the points that I, that I heard when I was at the park last week was that it's really kind of a, a crossroads of a lot of different parts of the city and, and that there's a lot of bike trails, so it's kind of a transportation route, too. You know, certainly, I think, you know, what, I do have some concerns about a Boyd Park skate park because of the, because of that fact as well. Because, you know, if we put it by the bike trail, does it, does it start to, is it like, is it, depending on how it's designed, it could interfere with that activity as well. So I think, you know, having this Boyd Park Plus Committee and having the neighborhood so involved and having the skaters so involved in its design, I think we can make sure it's, it fits well in that park. And those are kind of future decisions. But I think it is important that the city put money toward this because I saw in my hometown of Stillwater where we had several professional skateboarders come out of the community, they, you know, they left pretty quickly for places that actually had skateparks and our city really didn't. So maybe we can also retain some folks here. So, yeah, I definitely feel it's a good move for us to, to put more funding behind this and also to support the Cannery Park in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Verdi.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a comment that, one thing I've been impressed, well, probably more than one thing, but one of the things I've been impressed with, with the skateboarding group is their consistent outreach to me. Like usually with council, I've noticed over the last year and a half, almost year and a half, is that, you know, there's a swell of activity before a certain decision and then it kind of dies down. But it's been consistent. Like they, I heard from them over a year ago and it's like every so often, I'll get another email or they'll reach out to me. They continue to have fundraising events, which I see, and they had a meeting last fall. So I just wanted, I think that just says just their sustainability as a group and as their passion for our community. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you, Councilmember Verdi. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
If that motion, if that amendment passes, back to the original CIP, any other discussion or amendments? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President. Well, I do have a motion to amend the CIP as well, and it was in the packet. I think the first one listed in the packet, and I can introduce it here and pass it out to my colleagues. And also should be an extra one to go up on the overhead there. So this would amend our capital improvement plan for Fund 406, parking improvements by adding $10,000 in every year of the CIP to fund bicycle parking facilities at city-owned facilities and for city operations such as special events. This would include the purchase of bike corrals, bicycle racks, and mobile bike parking for use at city parks, special events, or for city buildings or parking lots. To accommodate this new project, projects, parking, wayfinding, and parking technology are reduced $5,000 in every year of the, of the CIP.
Is there a second? Councilmember Wirthman. Councilmember Gregor, did you wish to speak further?
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, I, obviously, in the, in, on page 74 of our packet, there is, you know, some, some council member rationale in there. You know, some of the reasoning for this is that we have kind of a variety of different types of racks at different parks and, and city buildings. And sometimes they're kind of outdated or need to be replaced. Sometimes they're not in really the best locations. Sometimes there's not enough of them. In some cases, there are no bike racks at all. So this creates essentially a segregated, you know, funding source for parking improvements that are specifically for bike parking. So it's all within the parking improvements fund. So I thought that was a very relevant place to put this line item. You know, sometimes, you know, just in the case that we were talking about earlier, there, there may be, you know, activities in the community that could damage public property if, if the facilities are not available. So bike parking, you know, prevents poles and trees and railings from being locked to, or at least reduces that, that likelihood at, at city buildings and city parks. So really, this is focused on, you know, places that I think the city has a responsibility to provide and kind of model the way for, for proper use of bike parking. And we do have standards for the private sector that, for new buildings and new facilities that are in the private sector. And I think we need to, to do more to kind of model the, the way on that, too, so that we're not asking something of the private sector, that we're not willing to do ourselves or not finding the flexibility to do. So, and I guess one thing I want to speak to is that this is adding 10,000 for each year of the CIP so that we have that sustained source, so that if, if there's a request for Boyd Park to have bike parking, for example, which it does not, we would be able to, staff would be able to respond and have a, have a funding source for that. It could also be if we pass a new change for our special event requirements, that if we, if we require bike parking for special events, which I think would be kind of a cool thing to do eventually, we would have a funding source to actually provide that initial outlay cost of the, of the racks. I do want to speak to where I'm kind of moving funding from. I think it's, you know, it is within the same fund, the parking improvements. And, you know, so one of the areas is parking technology, which we've, we've never had a line item for until the 2018 CIP. So that's kind of a new thing that we're spending money on, but it's going to fluctuate from year to year how much we would need to implement the kind of technology that, that may be implied within the parking plan that we're, the parking study that was, that was being conducted. But it doesn't reduce that amount by very much. It brings it from $100,000 a year to $95,000 a year into, throughout those five years. And on the wayfinding side of it, the first time we allocated funding specifically in the parking improvements budget was this year, CIP for 2019. So, and that, that was $20,000. And so I think, you know, reducing that to 15 still gives us, you know, the flexibility to be able to do, do the wayfinding that we need to do. There were some previous CIPs where the, you know, it had only $10,000 set aside for wayfinding, so, but that's been bumped up to 20,000. So this kind of meets it in the middle at 15. So that's my somewhat comprehensive introduction, so thank you.
Councilmember Gregor. Any other discussion regarding the subject? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
No.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
If that amendment passes, any other amendments or discussion regarding the CIP? Before I recognize Councilmember Emanuel, I just want to remind everyone, we have about 25 minutes to finish our meetings. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. Just a clarification around the amended CIP that the manager put forth. Is there any clarification that council needs to give to support those efforts for the single-family homes or you have sufficient?
I can speak to that.
Seeing Maggie Peters.
Thank you, Council President Weld. No, the, the memo that was included in the packet, you should consider that as part of the CIP. So the $200,000 and then the explanation as to what the project would be, will be included with your vote of the total CIP.
Any other discussion or comments? Councilmember Verdi.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to highlight, as city council, Peter, oh, sorry, city manager Peters stated last night about the health impact assessment. And there is a sheet at our desks that the health director passed out to us. So I was thinking about having her talk a bit about it, but in the interest of time, I just wanted to call attention to that for my colleagues to learn more about it, so. And I wanted to thank Lisa for bringing that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Verdi. Any other comments or, Councilmember Manuel.
Thank you so much. I wanted to just talk about the CIP in its really totality and appreciation for the plan that we have so we can keep moving forward in our community that we all work so hard to care for and to have forward momentum. One of the things that I have had concerns about, and I, I appreciate the amendments that have come forth, I had some concerns about the fountain. And because we have put significant amounts of funding to what I think kind of a broader spread of investments for our community, I feel very comforted by that. And I also think, you know, a large part of affordable housing is figuring out how do we raise the wages in this community. And one of our dear community members, former council member and current economist, Dr. Kemp, shares and talks about how do we keep our market hot? How do we keep our community growing? And I do think that nice amenities do help with that because we want employers to choose Eau Claire as a, a community of choice to bring new jobs and help to bring wages up. So I certainly do think that's really important. And I'm also very hopeful it certainly will not cost the entire, now as amended, $147,000 for a fountain. I'm looking forward to seeing how that is. And again, it's not picking on a fountain or picking on a neighborhood or that we can't have nice things if people are suffering. It's that we have to be able to holistically approach as many constituents as we can in our community. And I really appreciate the really hard work that council did tonight to get us there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manuel. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
And that's item passes. Moving on to agenda item number 24, resolution adopting the project plan and designating boundaries to the tax incremental district, number 13, Cannery District. Are there any further questions from the steering committee? Seeing none on a motion from Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Benjamin, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lorr.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Bergy. Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
And that item passes. Agenda item number 25, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development and purchase agreement with W Capital Group LLC for property located at 1700, 1750 North Oxford Avenue in Cannery Redevelopment District. Are there any questions for Mr. Winsen? Councilmember Kristofferson.
President Weld, is there going to be a presentation?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Although I deserve not being recognized because I am.
City Attorney.
Thank you, Council President Weld. All right, and I know we're on the clock. But I wanted to make sure, we did have at least a brief overview of this project since it has not yet been presented publicly. This is the site that's involved, this is a site in our Cannery Redevelopment District. The project is superimposed on this aerial, in this area, so it would be a substantial reuse of really this blighted site, offering in excess of 110 housing units in this area of our downtown. In terms of what it looks like, in terms of the proposal as submitted to Plan Commission so far, and approved through rezoning, these are some elevations that would be part of the development agreement depicting the view from Oxford Avenue, so, again, contemplated as a three-story, again, fairly dense urban environment with multifamily housing in two phases. I've got one more elevation, and I'll talk about some of the terms. So there's another, again, illustration of what this property might look like. The development, as I indicated, is anticipated to bring online in excess of 110 units. It is expected to be valued, and in fact required by this development agreement, to be valued at in excess of $11 million. Investment on it will probably be several million more than that. It is anticipated to be a two-phase project that would include both market rate workforce-type housing in the first phase and affordable housing in the second phase, with about 70 units in the first and 40 to 45 units in the second. The project does rely on the creation of TID 13, which you just created by your previous agenda item, as well as the developer incentives that are contained within the project and the development agreement. The developer indicates, and the agreement states in its terms, that this project could not go forward but for that TIF support. The parties are the Redevelopment Authority of Eau Claire, the Redevelopment Authority owns this property and has conditionally approved this agreement already by action at an earlier meeting pending this action by council. The developer is W Capital Group LLC through its principal Tyler Warner, as well as affiliated Phase 1 and Phase 2 development entities, those individual entities necessary to facilitate a two-phase development and also to allow the second-phase development LLC to apply for and own what we hope are WIDA LI-Tech, or low-income tax credits, low-income housing tax credits, to the investors in that second phase, which would facilitate making available affordable housing at considerable reduction from market rate. There is a land purchase, again, the RDA owns this land, it's just over 50,000 square feet, or, you know, better than an acre of land. A CSM, or Certified Survey Map, would be needed to be completed, and since we haven't done that, the sale price is identified as a flat amount of $206,196. That's a $4 per square foot sale price payable to the RDA based on what we anticipate the total square footage to be, but that plus or minus 5% just allows some variance if the CSM comes in a little different than we anticipate. It would also then add lands on upcoming agenda items, your next two agenda items vacating the northern half of Cameron Street and an alley that bisects the property. The developer by this agreement would be required to do several site improvement projects that otherwise would be public expense but are handled through developer cash grants in the agreement, including raising existing structures that are still on the property, remediating environmental issues that we know to exist on the property, and then otherwise accepting the property in as-is condition, and relocating and extending utilities within the property itself. In terms of city approvals necessary and public work that the city would agree to undertake, again, vacation of right-of-way, upcoming still on your agenda today, reconstruction of Oxford itself, and relocation of utilities within that right-of-way, and a full reconstruct is anticipated, so utilities and Boulevard restoration, all part of a project that we hope to begin in 2020. If that, there's terms in the agreement that if, for some reason, weather or whatever, you know, if winter refuses to leave on a reasonably timely basis, that Oxford project may get pushed out to 2021, so we can coordinate with developers' construction plans. And we'd also relocate existing XL power lines that are in the Oxford and Maxon Street right-of-ways and move those underground. In terms of the project itself in a little more detail, already referenced that it's a two-phase development, Phase 1 being approximately 71 market rate units, that construction would begin almost immediately upon closing, which is hoped for mid-August, and would continue into the early summer months of 2020 with an expected lease-up of this property really in less than a year's time, so very aggressive construction. The construction project itself is anticipated to be done locally, so you also have job creation, while the final terms of that contract are still being worked on between the developer and Royal Construction, it's anticipated that local contractor Royal Construction will be building this project. And the value of that has to come in as at least $8 million as of January 1, 2021, so as Mr. Winsens indicated last evening, as you move towards your objectives in your project plan for TID 13 of in excess of $60 million of new development, this project gets you a sixth of the way there. The Phase 2 is anticipated also to be multifamily housing and anticipated to be WIDA LI-Tech-supported subsidized housing. That housing, if the LI-Tech award is received for the 2020 cycle, application coming up this fall, you would see rent subsidy amounts with units available, but 30, as low as 30% of county median income, between 30 and 60% CMI units available in that second phase. However, you know, WIDA awards are competitive, they are outside of developer and city control, even though, you know, both give best efforts to get that award. Should that award not be forthcoming, the project would still move ahead as planned with units available at 80% of CMI or county median income, and then the majority of the units even in Phase 2 being market rate or workforce-style housing. Construction of that anticipated no later than the summer of 2021, with a value of at least another $3 million coming online by January 1 of 2023. And one last page, summarizing the city's investment in this project through TIF support, cash grant, developer incentives, payments made to reimburse for site remediation, preparation, and other statutory TIF project costs. Those payments would be made to the developer, and it makes the developer's financial, you know, numbers in this project feasible. The developer financials just now have been third-party reviewed, and based on that review, the developer and his investors, even after the public investment through cash grants, are receiving a well-below kind of par-normal rate of return on this project. The incentive payments are in two phases, $300,000 on Phase 1 are primarily, again, project-site-specific to make that project buildable, and the Phase 2, public incentives are variable, so as much as $500,000 or as little as $300,000 based on whether the project is fully LI-Tech affordable housing granted or not. And those are both paid in phases, so project has to move forward, has to meet certain deliverables before the payments are made. Finally, the closing, and the one contingency that is outstanding on the project, so closing on or before December 21, unless extended by the parties, and there is a pre-closing contingency, the developer saw it, just to make sure that their price doesn't change considerably on them, so there's a price escalator contingency. I did, you know, have a phone call with Royal Construction earlier this afternoon, and said the parties are close and they don't anticipate a problem on that percentage, but again, know that Royal and Mr. Warner would have to reach agreement if for some reason they can't, or there's unforeseen by other party price escalator, the developer could cancel the deal pre-closing. With that, any questions? Otherwise, it's been a good project, we've appreciated working with Mr. Warner, and he's expressed interest in doing other projects in our community, and we look forward to working with him again. I wish him well on this project.
Any questions for Mr. Winsen? So on a motion by councilmember Emanuel, and seconded by councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council.
President Weld, just very excited to see this project coming forward to us, and a huge amount of thanks goes to our city staff for tireless work on helping to negotiate this, and as well to Mr. Warner for also working in our community and bringing this idea forward. You know, I think this is going to, this is one of those things that's going to help us a long way to making sure that we are building more units, more rentals, affordable rentals in our community specifically, and so I'm just very excited that this project, which is a huge deal, is coming forward to us for a vote this evening, and a huge amount of thanks to everyone who's helped to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Winsen. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. I want to thank the new developer who is working on this project. He's really eager to make this work, and I've seen it grow through the Redevelopment Authority all the way now to final legislative approval. Looking at the numbers, he's not expected to really make a lot of money off of this. I mean, he's doing this because he wants to have a first project and a first early win in the Eau Claire community, and he's built other places, and he's choosing to build in Eau Claire. I also want to just publicly acknowledge that applying for LI-Tech credits doesn't automatically mean that they will be granted. These are very competitive federal funds, and so, you know, I'm eager to find out, I'll be very hopeful, and I want to just keep my eyes open that even with these good intentions, sometimes hiccups can occur because of a lack of funding to help reduce that cost. I appreciate that staff has built in a measure to have the developer work with city staff to help make sure that the application is as strong as it can be, so it can really be competitive as it's being reviewed, and I'll be crossing my fingers and my toes as this moves forward for success.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lorr.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
And that item passes. Agenda item number 26, resolution vacating the alley west of Oxford Avenue from Cameron Street to Maxon Street, and discontinuing the northern one-half of Cameron Street from Mappus Street to Oxford. Mr. Solberg is here, does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, on a motion by councilmember Lorr, and seconded by councilmember Kristofferson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Well.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lorr.
Aye. And that item passes. Agenda item number 27, a resolution releasing the utility usements within the alley west of Oxford Avenue from Cameron Street to Maxon Street, and discontinuing the northern one-half of Cameron Street. To Max, from Mappus Street to Oxford Avenue. Again, Mr. Solberg is here, are there any questions? Seeing none, on a motion by councilmember Clinkhammer, and seconded by councilmember Worthman, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lorr.
Aye.
Well.
Aye. And that item passes. Are there no ordinance for action this evening? There is one ordinance for introduction. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up this ordinance? Seeing none. Brings us to announcements and directives. City Manager Peters.
President Weld, just to, a reminder that on Thursday, from 3:00 to 8:00 is the open house at the refurbished City Hall. The ribbon cutting will be at 5:00, and then next Tuesday is the Night Out on Crime. It's at Owen Park, you heard the presentation earlier from 5:30 to 8:30.
Does council have any announcements? Seeing none, if there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-